Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our Committee of the Whole and special council meeting for Monday, October the 18th. I do wish to begin by acknowledging that we are meeting on the territory of the Sauk and Shianoo nations. So, members of council, I believe all members of the public though gathered here must wear a mask, is that not correct? So you know who you are, thank you. It has been deemed through our Public Health Orders and our policy that this particular area is deemed to be a work area of municipal hall, so therefore it falls under the no-mask requirement. But the public area is part of, like our front reception is publicly accessible and announced, so that's why everyone in those areas needs to wear a mask. And for us, it's optional because of where we're seated. So, we did get clarity and confirmation from Island Health and the B.C. Centre of Disease Control that we are meeting those guidelines. So, thank you everyone for attending and for masking. Okay. So, council, we are sitting first as Committee of the Whole, so a reminder that there is just one mover required for any motion, so look first here for approval of tonight's agenda to be adopted as circulated. Moved by councillor St Pierre. And don't need a second or any discussion. Seeing none committee, all those in favor please, and that's unanimous, thank you. So then our next item is item six, and we have our delegation for this evening, which would be Ms Anna Russell, which is carbon emissions for new development. And so as per any delegation, I believe we have five minutes allocated, is that correct?
My worship.
Yes, and so our staff will set the timer, but please come forward and introduce yourself, and we will start the timer when you start speaking. Thank you and welcome.
Could I ask a quick question?
I suppose.
In terms of extending these five minutes, it makes a difference to the speaker to know whether they have five minutes or whether they will be guaranteed an extra five minutes at the pleasure of council.
Well, there's never a guarantee because it's subject to council's will at the time, so you'll never know actually what council's will.
That makes it very difficult to be a delegate, I would think, speaking to this council.
It is. So that's where I think if you would like to make a change, you could put a notice of motion forward and we could look at changing our procedural bylaw, and that could be addressed at that time councillor. Okay, Ms Russell, thank you and welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for letting me come and talk to you tonight, and on behalf of the Policy Working Group on New Development, I wanted to talk to you about greenhouse gas emissions from new development. What we wanted to do is share some of our thinking with you so far, and get your initial feedback to help us on the next stage of our work, and we're not making any recommendations tonight or asking you to make any decisions. So can I have the next slide? And the one up, oh, this one, yeah, thank you. So I wanted to talk just really quickly about a question of livability with new development. And in this slide you can see a projection of what kind of traffic we might expect in the afternoon rush hour in Sauk with different levels of population growth. And if you look at the blue bar there, you can see that with 1,800 new residences in Sauk, we would be looking at approximately 900 new vehicles added to the Highway 14 commuter rush in the afternoon. Now that of course assumes similar commuter patterns as now, and that would be affected by many things, but given the cost of residences in Sauk that are going up, I don't think that's an unrealistic projection. Can I have the next slide? And I'm skipping because I'm doing the short version. So next slide please, and the one that says, it's slide number six actually. Yeah, thank you. So one of the ways to think about greenhouse gas emissions from new development, which is my main topic tonight, is the question of where do those emissions come from, what are the mechanisms that produce them? So new greenhouse gas emissions are created through three mechanisms: through land clearing and blasting, through the construction materials and processes we use, and through resident choices around heating and transportation. So next slide please, and next slide please. So this slide gives you some projected emissions for three different scenarios. If you look at the green line, you can see what our emissions will look like if we implement the 7 percent solution in full and we have no population change. The yellow line shows you what our emissions will look like if we have 1,200 new residences in Sauk, and the red line shows you what emissions we will have if we have 1,800 new residences in Sauk. Now, all of those scenarios are assuming that we're implementing the 7 percent solution in full, and of course the actual numbers of new emissions that we would get will be affected by the type of development that we have. But it's important to note that even with the 7 percent solution, continued growth will undermine our ability to meet any of our emission targets. Next slide please. So total emissions are one thing, but how do the sources of new greenhouse gas emissions compare? So this chart shows you what amount of emissions you would see from occupancy heating, from transportation, from land clearing, and construction. Next slide please, and keep going, and to additional requirements slide. So the draft OCP is well underway, and I want to acknowledge the tremendous work that's been done, and I really respect that work, and I think there's some incredible things that are in the new draft OCP that I'm really enthusiastic about. And I can say that and still say that I think there are going to be some additional requirements that we're going to need to meet the challenge of emissions from new development. And some of those requirements will be challenging the growth assumption of the regional growth strategy, banning new natural gas hookups, requiring heat pumps installed in all new development, developing a commuter reduction strategy, and prioritizing affordable housing so that people can afford to work in the community where they live. We'll also need to end greenfield development and protect our carbon sinks. So next slide please. So this is just a reminder of what our future emissions might look like if we had no policy changes and unlimited growth according to the projections of our population. Next slide please. But this is what our emissions could look like if we banned greenfield development and all new buildings were required to install heat pumps. And next slide, this is what our emissions would look like if we were also able to significantly reduce commuting. Even so, we don't get to zero with continued growth, and the emissions that I'm plotting here don't include new emissions from solid waste, off-road transportation, commercial building energy, and delivery and heavy vehicles. So that's something to consider. Next slide please, and that one, thank you. So, since new development always brings new emissions, we can't just grow without limit, we're going to need to concentrate only on the growth that we actually really need. And we would probably suggest that that would be around affordable housing, commercial development, and in those cases, all developments built to minimize emissions to the maximum possible. Next slide please. So at a recent council meeting, I heard the mayor and council and the OPC Advisory Committee Chair all asking what you could do to give teeth to the OCP and to make sure that it would be implemented with all the many wonderful new measures that are included in that. And we would also suggest that depending what's in the final draft of the OCP, we may need to go beyond that to seriously address the question of emissions from new development. So our committee is researching tools that we can recommend to you in Sauk to achieve this and to address this issue that I have raised. We're looking for your comments tonight on what I've presented so far. I had a really helpful meeting with Mr Paulo on Friday, who provided us with some good advice, and we're looking to see what's in the final draft of the OCP and take it to our committee to talk about what recommendations would result. Last slide. So thank you very much for your time. One second.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll just ask council, was there any questions on the presentation for our delegate tonight?
Well, yeah, I'd like to extend.
You need to turn on your microphone.
I'd like to move that we extend her time by five minutes so she can elaborate a little further on what we've heard.
Okay, so is that a...
Excuse me, that's not necessary. Her presentation was five minutes, now council debate can continue after that five minutes.
Okay, so any questions on the presentation?
Well... So, it's a lot to take in. Thank you very much for the presentation. It brings a very different perspective to our 50 percent reduction goal by 2030, and that 50 percent reduction goal is rooted exclusively in the GFC, is that right? GFC plus Carbon Accounting System? GPC plus Framework. And you are bringing forward the fact is that carbon sinks, i.e. greenfields or undeveloped land, stands of trees, and other undeveloped parts of our district hold considerable amounts of carbon, store it. I think you, I heard somewhere that StanTech had done a CRD territorial emissions report, and it noted that CRD's green space is estimated to have sequestered and stored 19.2 percent less carbon in 2018 than in 2007 due to land use changes. So I think the whole mission of net zero by 2050 is to pull down out of the environment upwards of 51, how many, is that, William, William, is that trillion or million tons of CO2 equivalent? So I guess, could you reiterate what those top recommendations are to really meet our 50 percent target by 2030?
Yeah, and I guess I would... Could you turn it? I guess I would say that at this point they're not exactly recommendations, we're sort of floating some ideas and we're looking for feedback, but it seems to me that one of the major concerns is going to be that there can't be unlimited growth, we won't be able to meet any emission reduction targets with that. And then secondly, when you look at what that growth is, what is the growth that we are really most desperately in need of in our community, and how do we build it so that it's safe and it doesn't put our future at risk? And that would include some of those additional requirements around no natural gas hookups and heat pumps installed, rather than being ready for a heat pump that it's actually installed, and dealing with the problem of commuting in Sauk, which is a longer-term issue. And then finally, not clearing land for development. And I think it's interesting to note that humans are less than 1 percent of the life on Earth by mass, but we've already changed 80 percent of the landmass, of the ice-free landmass on Earth, and we're now melting the ice. So it's kind of interesting to think about that and think maybe we could make do with the land that we've already altered and not keep ripping the vegetation off more pieces of land, which is providing a really significant carbon sink function.
So, yeah, through you to our Director of Planning, Mr Paulo, when you hear this presentation, could you give me some feedback, or us some feedback on what you've heard
I think based on the conversation that Ms Russell and I had on Friday, just understanding the work of the 7 percent solution and the draft official community plan, there's really two elements at work, specifically the official community plan, you know, as base as a land use planning document, but also including those other elements that are contained within the Local Government Act, and also the work of the 7 percent solution, which goes a little bit further in terms of, you know, educating the public on certain initiatives that can be undertaken to help improve their contribution to reducing GHG emissions. So a large component to that is that as part of the consulting team Sustainability Solutions Group, as a subconsultant for the OCP, and through their modeling and work that they've done in other municipalities, excuse me, they put forward a target in this draft document that suggests that if these policies are to be followed, that we can reach those targets on the incremental horizons that have been provided. So all that stems to retrofitting, green building, reducing the amount of trees that have been removed, and also limiting sprawl. That's a huge component to that document, and that's through the three different growth scenarios that the public were presented with, looked at those different options to meet those targets, and basically status quo, so the way that we've been developing over the last two decades, will not help us reach that target. But those two other growth scenarios that were presented would help us reach those targets if we followed those policies. So in order to meet net zero, we need to follow the draft policies that have been suggested, and in association with that, working with the 7 percent solution could also help reach that target as well, both from a municipal government standpoint, but also from the public doing their part outside of a development application process or the like.
So the follow-up on that, so I guess to meet a target, and yet we will be, according to the OCP, will double our housing stock by 2050 approximately. So how on earth can we possibly reach that target in real terms?
One of the comments that I've been providing when that type of question's been asked in different formats is that a lot of what we're trying to accomplish comes at a cost, whether it's the cost of not having housing but having money available to take on these initiatives, if it's the cost of removing more of our natural landscape to provide for those housing opportunities. There's a number of different scenarios, and so when you look at what council and the district has adopted as the low-carbon resilience model to address this, we make sure that we can achieve all of those goals together so that we can move towards that net zero component. And so with the draft OCP and those targets that have been set, we're suggesting that we can achieve that.
And I guess finally, in terms of the tools that Ms Russell is offering, I guess ultimately we just have to keep coming back at the fact, these are political decisions, that the OCP remains a neutral document, and that it's up to this and future councils to make determinations of how to enact recommendations and policies.
So with any type of bylaw, which ultimately the official community plan will be adopted as a bylaw, as our new master planning land use document, council has the ability, when this comes forward at first reading, to make any suggested revisions to that document. And throughout the entire process, going into the public hearing even, where we get to have more feedback from the public, that council can then again make any necessary changes. So yes, any subsequent councils can have official community plan amendments proposed that might be different than what was first adopted. But ultimately what we know today is the document has been written based on the feedback that's been provided up until this point to help inform council of what the community vision has been shared with us to date.
Other question?
Okay, any other questions? Councillor St Pierre.
Through your worship did Mr Paulo. I just want to reconfirm the number of homes that are already zoned to be built, number of units zoned to be built at this point in time without any change in zoning whatsoever.
So we had approximated just over 1,200 dwelling units when we first began the process, so that included, as you had mentioned, those with zoning in place that they could then come in for a development permit if it met the official community plan design guidelines for development permit areas, and then also those ones that may have a development permit already in place but are going through the subdivision process or perhaps in the building permit stages. So in those various permit processes, but at the initial stage at least having their zoning in place so that we could then calculate a density amount.
Okay. Is there a legable, legal, workable way for us to reduce that number?
To reduce that number?
Yeah, from 1,200 to zero, for example.
For those applications that have already been approved, that would absolutely be a challenge for the district to then rescind that approval if they've met all the bylaw requirements and they haven't issued approval. The only changes that I could foresee is if something already had zoning in place but no other development approval applications provided, that zoning would then essentially, as the public would know it, as being downzoned to something with a lesser density. But down to zero, I cannot see that happening just given the fact that there are already existing approvals in place with developers moving forward on those either constructions because they have building permits, or they're completing subdivision conditions to get titles created for their lots.
All right. So knowing that council is actually all-powerful, if we were to decide to do it anyway, and basically say you can't build anything more, no more development, what would be the consequence at that point?
If you're, I'll just summarize that and say, what you're suggesting is that once the approvals that are in place have been completed, the district would take a position that there would be no policies that would support further growth for new development.
Correct.
That would ultimately have a huge implication on our budgets. Certainly new growth brings in a source of revenue that I would ultimately foresee as being ways to help fund other types of projects that support, you know, social, environmental pieces as well. So that's again using the low-carbon resilience as a way to help benefit the community as a whole, and grow our community, and have other supports in place. And we talk about affordable housing and other components as well, you know, certain limitations can be brought forward by not having any new further housing opportunities in place, we have to work with what we have, and I can only say that that may be a challenge just based on looking at other municipalities that have gone through that process and don't have any more growth in trying to meet those housing demands.
So in order to put in the commercial, the jobs, the affordable housing, the active transportation networks that Ms Russell is suggesting that we need as the appropriate sort of growth in our community, what I'm hearing is that we need the other growth?
They all contribute to each other, so when looking at certain businesses and whatnot, they're looking for an employment base, you know, the staff that are going to go into those businesses. And ultimately those businesses are going to locate in places where they can acquire those employees. So if we're at a point where we don't have any more employees or growth to offer these non-residential businesses, we could face a challenge by trying to further increase our employment lands.
Okay, I have a question for Ms Russell. One of the things that troubles me the most is that we know that the Heat Dome and a lot of other stuff is just the tip of the iceberg, that's just the start. Wildfires are going to be destroying more homes, we're going to have more people that are essentially climate refugees within Canada. One of the reasons that I chose to move to Sauk was because there's an ocean nearby, it's going to moderate the temperature because it feels like a safer place, it's got good governance, and basically it's a good place to be. I'm expecting we're going to have a lot of climate refugees with a lot of money and with nothing but an RV showing up on our doorstep. What do we do in terms of zero growth to deal with that sort of thing? And it's just, it's almost a rhetorical question, but I've been hearing a lot about zero growth, and yet I don't know how, in some ways we can morally ethically manage some of it, but I'm just putting that out there. Yeah, I think that's it for now for me, thanks.
I think that's an excellent question, but I don't think that's the kind of growth we're talking about. That's kind of a moral growth that we should be talking about, but we're talking about growth for people who have money and means and the ability to move. And I'm here in Sauk for the same reason. But I would say that Sauk is maybe a relatively safe place to be for a while, but the headline on the Manchester Guardian during, or the Manchester Weekly during the Heat Dome was "Nowhere is Safe," and the inside was all about the Heat Dome in B.C.
Okay, councillor Logan.
There we go. Thank you very much for your presentation. It is scary and insightful, and I'm glad that you brought it up at this time while we're working on our OCP. One thing I did want to mention to councillor St Pierre's comment was that the other side of this is that we do want economic development in our community, and a lot of the people who are building in our town are from our town, and they're making money in our town and providing jobs in our town. So the consequence would also include job loss and causing some people to work outside of town, which would increase emissions. So there's a bit of a balance to that as well. I think our job is not to say we shouldn't, we should stop all development, but to do everything we can to ensure that we're doing it the best way. So as was mentioned, Anna presented a couple of options, and perhaps if I may ask you to elaborate on them, or perhaps provide additional information, the heat pumps and providing gas, ensuring that we have every opportunity or encourage developers to be including those things in their work right off the bat, that's something that we can control immediately, we could implement that tomorrow. So, well, theoretically staff might look at me like, "No." But you know what I mean. But if I may, through you, ask the presenter for more details on those items, and also perhaps if you have any examples of other communities, what they've done to improve their building situation so that it's more climate-friendly.
Okay, thank you for that question. And I think the heat pumps is an interesting one because what's in the current draft OCP is that step code five would be implemented earlier than is the current schedule. And my understanding is that step code five makes a building ready for a heat pump to be installed, but the heat pump is not necessarily actually installed. So what CAC is saying in response to that is that the heat pumps have to actually be in there because it's too expensive for people to do it after, and it needs to be upfront. The one example of another community that's just really recently recent that has done that is Vancouver, and I know that Vancouver operates under a different charter than everybody else, but they did a massive consultation with builders around that, and a lot of builders said that they wanted stricter guidelines and they would be able to meet the demand for heat pumps and for other technologies, and that if those, if it didn't become a requirement, that in effect it was rewarding the builders who have been, who haven't been making the change and haven't been developing the networks and the connections with suppliers and the skills to do this work, it's rewarding the climate deniers and not the people who are trying to deal with the problem. So one of the things I wanted to find out tonight was what kind of questions you have and what's really raised for you in the presentation, and I'd be happy when we get to the stage of making recommendations to give you a bit more information on all of the questions that you're raising tonight.
Okay, councillor Betos.
Yeah, thank you. It's on, yeah, okay. I'm on the OCP, and I worked very diligently in the last year listening to the concerns of Sauk residents. And my job is to listen to all of their concerns, not just the climate action concerns, and I'm very concerned about our climate as well. But the biggest one that's hitting today, there's a couple of them, one is affordability. And if we stop building, it goes back to the old supply and demand. So if we stop building, the demand for people to live in Sauk because it's such a great spot, we've got no building going on, is going to drive the housing prices up even worse than they are now. And I cannot understand how anybody, a working person, can possibly afford anything now at the prices. And if the supply isn't there, we will be a community of older people from back east moving here that have the $2 million for a house. So I'm a little concerned about that. I guess it was not really a question. I also see, you know, when it comes to reducing our carbon footprint, a lot of good things happening in the world, in the province and the country. The step code is going to make things even more expensive, but we're moving in the right direction. And of late, the thing that makes me happiest, and maybe you could comment on it, is the number of electric cars that I'm seeing. And I understand that the Climate Action Committee is, we are to put more charging stations, and I certainly applaud that. So I'm a little concerned about the balancing act with the residents who we serve, not just the Climate Action Committee and their lobby, but all the other ones, and councillor Logan's alluded to it, is we have a lot of people that work in this community, in the industry, and we, I understand it's a dire state, but we've got to be careful how we proceed here with logic and sensibility. And Iowa said we're at the municipal level, what can we do at the municipal level with the means that we have? And that's the other thing, of course, is we don't have a large amount of money to draw on. I'd love to give everybody a free heat pump. I think we're, I think what's proposed is $365 subsidy for 60 or so heat pumps. I'm okay with that, it's a step in the right direction, but we are limited in our funding. And we, if we just stop everything, we'll just basically collapse on ourselves. I like what you're, where you're going with some things, but I'm a little concerned that we will have a very, very difficult time in meeting the goals that you lay out without some drastic, drastic changes which the community's not ready to make.
Thank you.
Okay, final question?
Yeah, second round. And I just, I think there's just some misconceptions happening here. I think there's no suggestion of zero growth. It's called managed growth, as councillor Logan's noted, and I think that one of the key points here, and I'd like to direct this through you to Mr Paulo again, is, you know, the OCP is predicated on the growth projections of the CRD's regional growth strategy. So that's 22,000 by 2038 and beyond. So the question is, as much as it's necessary to predicate your planning document on So the question is, as much as it's necessary to predicate your planning document on those numbers, it is district and this and future councils can question those projections. And so first of all, is that correct, that we are not captive to those growth projections?
We're not absolutely captive to those projections. However, given that we have our regional growth statement indicating how we're going to grow and in that alignment with the regional growth strategy, that at least acknowledges the information that's been put forward from the CRD and how we are going to best comply and work with those expectations for growth and not just growth, but other policy areas within our documents and the CRDs. The other piece too is just looking at the past work that we've done, whether it's the economic analysis or just current statistics that are coming out and making sure that there's general alignment. So what we know is based on those projections, and you look at a large period of time with those projections, you see that there is that expected growth to continue. So planning for that and at least having a plan shows that there's been good management put in place for that growth. If it doesn't occur, then at least we haven't fallen behind in the event that it does occur and we don't have a plan for it. And so that's the whole aspect of managing that growth. But at least based on the best information that is available, we can at least work with those projections and have policies in place and address those other areas to work with a growing population that's anticipated.
So in the new regional growth statement for Sook that will emerge with this OCP, does that include population projections?
It will include adherence to those and also further descriptions as to where we're headed as a community and justifying any pieces regarding, you know, community growth boundaries. Because that's the big piece that I think is forgotten a lot of time when we're looking at our municipality, is that some municipalities have their municipal boundary as a community growth boundary, so they can grow out to their extent. For us, it's a little bit different. We have that interesting area of rural and urban mix. And so how do we manage the community growth area, which is going to be more urban in nature, while at the same time protecting that natural area? And those are the strict policies that we've put in place outside of that community growth boundary to protect it. Because that's, that's what we heard time and time again through the engagement process is that that's what people like. And so we have that benefit. We have the support from the CRD as well to protect those areas because it's beyond that boundary. We can't change that boundary without the CRD supporting us. So our focus can be in on those areas that we anticipate there to be growth and that we manage it accordingly in that community growth boundary.
So just as a comment before our final question, and that is, you know, we do have a limit to growth in Highway 14. And of course, as many commuters now know, we are, that's a challenging road at the best of times. We now have a Sook crawl. So when I speak of managed growth, it's like realistic managed growth to ensure that we're not a gridlocked community. And so to look at the 2050 projection of double the number of homes in Sook, it causes me great concern and others great concern. So I think it, I know the growth strategy is those projections are renewed every five years, and I think we just did it last year. It makes for a really challenging piece. And I know in our OCP and the Transportation Master Plan, we don't really deal with 14 because it's the responsibility of the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And I know there is a commitment to advocacy with MOTI to continue improving Route 14. But it's just a big philosophical question of two-lane road that will take over a billion dollars, $100 million to, or is that $1,000 million? God, my trillions and millions, it's tough at times. So it's, that's going to be difficult to get four lanes straight through to Langford to accommodate double the population. So my final question is back to our delegation here. And could you please sum up what you had to say in a two-minute quick summary, just to refresh us all?
While you can hear the sound of thinking. I think the question is, the fundamental question is, how serious is this problem? Is it a problem that we can kind of deal with and we're going to be okay? Or is it a problem that we have to address head-on or we're not going to be okay? And I'm on the side of thinking that unless we deal with it head-on, we're not going to be okay. This is the mitigation report from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. It's 1,400 pages long and the basic summary is that the status quo is not going to cut it. So I guess what I want to say is that in our opinion and the work that we've looked at so far, unlimited growth with building, even with the, what's in the current draft OCP, is going to result in an increase in emissions in Sook even if we implement the 7% solution in full. So as I said, I need to see what shows up in the next draft of the OCP. And the Climate Action Committee has submitted some suggestions, as well as other people in the community who are concerned about climate. So that's the first thing, is to see what the next draft looks like. And then we'll be able to revise it, or sorry, review it and look at the additional requirements that I've listed out in my presentation and see how close are we. And then not everything needs to be in the OCP. And there may be some tools that we can use that would help address some of these concerns, but it doesn't require anything else in the OCP. So that's one of the questions we're going to look at with the committee. But fundamentally for me, we need to meet a 50% reduction target by 2030 and we need to meet it with real math. And I think there's a bit of, there's some missing math in climate change and there's some wishful thinking around how that math adds up. And I don't find it encouraging to come here and tell you this. I find it terrifying to come here and tell you this, that I think if we, if we do even some, we don't have to do really complicated regression analysis and modeling. We can do some simple math and see that it doesn't add up. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time with us today, Ms. Russell. We appreciate your delegation and thank you for answering all those questions and giving us some comments. More to come. Okay, counsel, next up on our agenda is item 7.1, a memorandum of understanding with the Sook Region Communities Health Network. So we have our report here, but I'll ask our CAO just to introduce the report and take us through it, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. As you know, we have been working with the Sook Region Communities Health Network to design and build a facility on the northeast quadrant of our land that we own on Wadham's Way. We've given Searchen the ability to design and then source funding for that piece of land. And that all was constituted through a memorandum of understanding that we have between the district and Searchen. That memorandum of understanding will expire next month if it's not extended. So the recusing front of council this evening is that in alignment with the perceived next call for funding from B.C. Housing, which is expected to be somewhere between 12 and 18 months from now, to extend the MOU and at the advice of B.C. Housing to add two different pieces to the MOU. First is that the term of the lease, which is 50 years plus two additional extensions for 25 years, that's not in the MOU now. It is in the lease agreement. B.C. Housing has suggested that we put that into the MOU. And then as well, that the second recommended change to the MOU is that the charitable project be tax exempt, consistent with Part 7, Division 7, the permissive tax exemptions under the community charter.
Okay, thank you. I'll take any questions, please. Questions before a motion? Questions? Counselor Bettes?
Yeah, to our CAO. When this originally came before us, it was for a seniors, youth and seniors housing complex. But since that time, we now have big development going on Drennan, which is, I think it's affordable subsidized, I'm not sure of the term that we use there, housing, which would apply to seniors. We also have this, another one on charters, and I can't remember how many units there, and a few other builds around town and a rental one just over here. What is the need for seniors housing complex at this time? I have certainly seniors in a youth center. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just a little bit perplexed as to what the community's needs are for seniors housing. Can you shed any light on that, please?
Absolutely. So 274 units total in the two, the two projects on charters and Drennan. I don't know the mix between the two, but the total is 274 new units. The affordable housing strategy that was commissioned by the District of Sook in 2019 specifically talks to seniors housing and the lack of seniors housing and the expected demographic increase in our community. So the 74 units that are suggested in this build will not meet the need was in our strategy that was approved by council in 2019.
Just a clarification, that's even with these present builds that are coming online? Because they will also have seniors element to them, will they not?
They could. There's a, it's not demographically divided in these two B.C. housing builds. It's more, there are some shelter rates, some below market rates and some market rate units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Loggins, yeah?
Just to provide some more clarity on that to Counselor Bettes, the housing needs assessment that our CAO was referencing, that...
Point of order is, I don't really need any more, I got it from the state.
Okay, well, I'll use it as my comment.
I'm curious. Go ahead, please.
Oh, it's not a negative thing. It's just some more information about that because it's a good topic for this discussion. But the housing needs report included those builds that are happening, the B.C. housing builds, already in the numbers. So those ones were already counted. So anything above and beyond what we're building now would only be included in, I can't talk properly, but those ones are already included in the, in the housing needs assessment. So anything that comes on new now will be assisting in improving our numbers for housing.
Do you remember roughly how many units that report called for that we need to look at?
I'm looking at Counselor Bateman.
As we stare at Counselor Bateman.
It would be at least like 1,200.
It was around, it was either 1,200 or 1,400?
I think it was around 1,200, yeah. Like additional homes we would need or units we'd need.
Okay. It's in the report. Counselor St. Pierre, back to the report, please.
Yes. I have a follow-up question that sort of comes from what Counselor Bettes was saying. And that's just, in 2016, the center was referred to as a multi-use community center. Now it's an elder drop-in center. Why are we not continuing to use the multi-use community center language, which seems more appropriate, given that the funding was meant for youth and seniors?
So, okay, so maybe I'll take a stab at answering this is, so the representatives from Searchen have come forward to provide us with updates. And so some of the work that they did was to do outreach into, okay, the space in particular and what would it look like? And they did, they did some engagement work around that. They found the need for programmable space and sort of what the space would look like. I think there was also, just to name the project that we look at elders versus seniors because some of our seniors in their 90s don't want to be referred to as elders. So there's kind of a difference there. You say it to me all the time, not to pick on you, Counselor Bettes, but you're a very, you know, it's just, we're trying not to age people and necessarily so. So they came up with a particular name, calling it the elders complex. And then through some of the outreach that they were doing, it was to name this and also not to compete with the advocacy effort for air manner and the funding expansion that is still desperately needed over there. So this is independent living. It's not, there is a way to bring in things like better at home and the like, but it's a bit different than the, than how air manner is set up, how it's funded and the services that it runs to and the advocacy work that they still need because that facility also needs to be expanded.
A follow-up question. That's, I don't think it's quite what I was wondering about. I was really more wondering about the elder drop-in center at all as opposed to multi-use, which wouldn't actually be pointing at any particular demographic group, but would allow either youth or elders to use that programmable space. I know that it pointed in the programmable space. We desperately need more community space, more programmable space. But as soon as you actually term it elder center, there's a, there's an inference that it's, you know, going to be seniors and elders that are going to be using it and this is programmable community space. So I was wondering why in the MOU term it an elder drop-in center as opposed to the 2016 multi-use community center space, which works just fine as far as I can tell.
This was designed to have specific programming and activities and the needs for seniors drop-in center. So, and they were the group that were part of this in the partnering and identified this as a need ever since the last seniors facility closed, of which we don't have. You could argue then that Sea Park is a multi-use space and so forth, but it doesn't necessarily meet the needs of some of our seniors that actually need targeted services. Like our community paramedic is always looking for where the seniors drop-in center is so they can do things like group fitness, managing care, foot care, all those sorts of things. And so there was a long list that the Searchen group brought forward to us on it and we agreed to that.
Okay, so just, yes, but I'm getting confused about some, we've been going over this one for a long time, so some of the specifics escape me. I guess at this point, what I'm hearing is that clearly there's a very desperate need for the senior services and the senior center. And so now the real target group is seniors and elders for this particular community center. Is that correct?
I believe so. And then also there was two grants. There was a grant for the housing component that was applied for, and there was also a grant to do the drop-in center that was applied for, and our community was not successful with either one of those two grants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, thank you. Of course, we've had this conversation. The current MOU was signed on November 23rd, 2020. So through you to Mr. McKinnis, looking at the recommendation specifically, this additional 18 months for the MOU, is this effectively buying time for Searchen before the next B.C. housing?
Yes, Your Worship, to Counselor Bateman. The practical implications of this is council will not be expecting me to go and find alternate uses for that piece of land in the 18-month period.
Okay. And then more critically, however, is the second part of this is that council add these following two items to the MOU, which includes the provision of land for term of 50 years with two additional extensions of 25 years for a cost of $1 per term, which is the same terms as the library, for example. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's in the draft lease agreement that we have with Searchen. But with feedback from B.C. Housing on our first application, there were these two suggestions that could help our next application.
Do you have a sense of why B.C. Housing turned down this application?
Just volume. That's, they said our application was extremely strong, well-done, on point, but it was just the amount of applications that they had to deal with.
And what was my other question?
Well, Counselor Bateman, thanks to that. Can I respond to Counselor St. Pierre? One of the pieces of information that we did have is Searchen did do a youth needs assessment, came to council. And the determination there was that youth were not necessarily looking for dedicated space, but were looking for more programming type opportunities. And that certainly is part of what will be envisioned in the common area of the center.
Got it?
Okay, and I, no, I have comments, but that's it for questions.
Okay, other questions? St. Pierre, Counselor?
Just very quickly, curious about the 12 to 18-month period. Does that allow basically for any snags in terms of getting a response from the province or from B.C. Housing? Like, is 18 months sufficient?
I believe it is. I think, just reading the tea leaves, that we'll see another call for proposals sooner rather than later.
Okay, so the recommendation, oh, Counselor Bettes, follow-up question?
No, I'm, sorry, excuse me, Your Worship, but it's going to be, there's a couple of items here, one and two. And like the 18 months, I'm okay with that. I'm not going to, if it's needed, and that was my question, it is needed, I don't have a problem with it. But the provisions for the 50 years and the 25, no problem with that. But the last one is a tax exemption for, I mean, the seniors, are they low-income seniors and can't pay taxes on, I mean, they don't pay direct taxes, but they pay it on their rent, which would go to taxes. My concern is that if everything becomes tax-exempt, I mean, this, you know, this is how we fund our community with taxes. how we fund our community with taxes, I'm a little alarmed about putting that item two in there. I don't mind with item one, and I don't mind the extension, but I'm a little concerned. So, what sort of, that'd be a hit for us, would it not?
Your worship to Counselor Beddoes, great question. There are two possibilities. This could be exempt under provincial legislation, we're not totally sure of that. But, just from a strength of the application and feedback from B.C. housing, they suggested if we wanted to make our application better for the next round, this is extremely important. So, it's there, it's a recommendation for council to consider tonight, I think it's an important recommendation. These applications are going to continue to be very, very competitive, and we need to do all that we can to position ourselves for funding.
So, from what I hear, you tell me that this would add greatly to our chances of succeeding with this application. So, okay, thank you for your comments.
Okay, I have an exhausted questions. To our corporate officer, can these be read all at a block, or do they need to be separated?
They can be done together, but if you think that any one of them will not pass, it might be better to separate them.
Okay, I'll determine that as we get into a debate on it, then. So, I'm going to read it all out as a block, then, and then, council, you're welcome to put forward a motion to sever, if you wish to debate individually. So, here we are, the recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommends that council extend for an additional eighteen months the memorandum of understanding with the Sook Region Communities Health Network, Search &amp; for a land at six-six-seven-one Wadham's Way, and that the committee of the whole recommends that council add the following two items under section six of the M.O.U. One, the provision of the land for a term of fifty years with two additional extensions of twenty-five years for a cost of one dollar per term. Two, that the chair, that this charitable project will be tax-exempt, consistent with Part Seven, Division Seven, permissive exemptions of the community charter. So, I'll look for a mover, moved by Counselor Bateman, and you've moved it, no second word. Counselor Bateman, you have the floor.
With the microphone on. So, you know, this, as the notes here today, our agenda states, we have been in a process that dates back to just after World War Two, to get a permanent facility in Sook for seniors, elders, with, in this current vision of the project, it's a elders complex with intergenerational programming on the ground floor, and then seventy-five units of affordable seniors housing above it. And, you know, this is being, through the Age Friendly Committee and Search &amp;, Mary Dunn and Rick Robinson, and other very capable people in our community have been working very hard on this. There was a disappointment at the B.C. housing, rejection of this latest application in round two of the housing funding project fund. Oh, dear, I'm losing it. Yeah, it is early, damn. All your fault. Yeah, okay, so, the key point here is, Mary Dunn, Carol Panowski, they are driving forward, they've got some alternate irons in the fire, there's an eighteen-month period here, which we're allowing them to proceed with, we're adding sections to the M.O.U. that Malcolm McNaughton of B.C. housing has recommended. You know, the reason this latest thing didn't come through, because B.C. housing has spent upwards of seventy-six million dollars in Sook in recent years, with Drennan and Sook, Chargers and Throop, and the purchase of the Hope Center. They've also invested in the Knox Center, and in ongoing funding for the Diamond Jubilee Housing Society. So, it's natural that we didn't get it this time, but next time, this sets us up very effectively for the next round of applications. Thanks.
I think that's a good excuse for B.C. housing not to, I don't buy the natural, that naturally accepted, I think it's years of catch-up, and it's disappointing to me that we didn't get this funding, and B.C. housing has, that's a terrible excuse. It is, I mean, we're growing rapidly, our demographic is aging, and there's been a demonstrated need for this type of facility and others within our community, so they don't get off the hook. In the meantime, I have ramped up advocacy to our M.L.A., and also have asked the Minister of Health and a few others, what do we need to do differently this time, if this type of application on service land, walkable, district-owned land is not being funded? Because, for a long time, that was the reasons why we were not getting pieces, other municipality are giving service land over, as well as funds out of their coffers to build attainable housing, and here we are with one, and they're not funding it. So, that's an excuse, you're very kind, but it's all good. Meanwhile, this, I'll just add, this building is to provide universally accessible housing. Drennan and the Throop projects are purpose-built, affordable rental, catering to demographic of varying income levels, but we need universally accessible, purpose-built type of housing. And this is where this one is important. And so, yes, they have done a lot of follow-up to have this application a bit stronger, which is why these recommendations are here. Other comments? Counselor Beddoes?
Yeah, I won't go into much, Counselor Bateman said a lot into it, but that's very good. Just on that, I'm okay with all this, they've put a lot into this, and I appreciate the community's effort, and a lot of people put a lot of things for the memorandum of understanding. It's certainly worth waiting another eighteen months for, and I was very thankful to staff answering my questions, and I'm okay to proceed with this, thank you.
Okay, anything else from members of council? Call a question, then, all those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to seven point two, is from the Sook Family Resource Society.
And I will step out of the room with a conflict of interest, thank you.
And that conflict is?
My mother's the executive director of the society.
Okay, thank you, we will, you may need to pull a chair into the hallway. Oh, excellent, okay, thank you. Okay, over to staff, please.
Thank you. I don't have a formal presentation to go along with this report, this is just a follow-up to council's request from the community grant council meeting that occurred earlier this year, and out of that, there was a resolution for council to provide staff an option for potential service agreement for Sook Family Resource Society. As stated in the report, for the reasons stated in the report, staff are not recommending a formal service agreement with Sook Family Resource Society. We understand that they provide valuable services to the community, just the mechanism of a service agreement may not be the, could open up potential other problems or concerns from a funding perspective, if this was the avenue chosen by council at this time. I do know there is representatives from Sook Family Resource Society here, and would like the opportunity to speak of their proposal. Happy to answer any questions before, if you like, or I know they are here and would like to speak.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Ms. Gray, and perhaps what we'll do is, we'll invite, then, the delegation forward, and then, to understand more about the proposal, and then, we can sort of take any questions that we have together after that point. And welcome.
Thank you. Microphone. Thank you, your worship, council, staff. Thanks, Rachel, nice to meet you. Nikki Loggins, executive director at Sook Family Resource Society, and here with Louise Parkinson, who is the manager responsible for the services for which we're asking your support. I didn't have a formal presentation, but I do want to have an opportunity to speak to the recommendation that has come forward from the staff. I'm just going to read it again. Yeah, I want to address the issue of advocacy. I think it's really important that council has a really good understanding of what mental health supports the need is in the community, and to be able to advocate for us at the provincial level. However, I don't support the idea that we, that it's not our problem. I think that we have to live up to our moniker as a compassionate community, and consider that its, mental health supports is the problem of everybody and every level of government. When someone comes to ask for help for mental health, and indeed, our proposal is for youth service as well as adult service, I'm assuming you've read the information that was put forward, when someone makes a call asking for counseling support, that person is calling for one of two reasons. Either they are at wits' end and in fear of harming themselves or harming other people, or they are ready, willing, to step into a very courageous way to ask for help. So, the situation we're in right now is that we are at a place where we have to put people on hold, sometimes for months. We do have, that's just not acceptable. I mean, when people step forward, they're ready, they want to improve their lives, they want to be able to go back to work, they want to be valuable, useful members of our society, you know, commit to helping in our community, go back to work, go back to school, learn some tools about how to manage their anxieties, their fears, their grief, their mental health. We know, our professional here is teaching me, that that step, that time of asking is imperative, and if we, as a community, are not able to step forward at that time, then we've lost a huge opportunity. So, I want to encourage you to rethink the recommendation that has come forward from staff, with all due respect to Rachel and Mr. McInnis and Ms. Gray. And I understand your concerns, but the, not our problem, it's just not, it's just not on, it's just, it's not. I'm sitting here, listening to people talking about building twelve thousand, twelve hundred more homes, where are the social service supports for those people? Where are the medical supports and health supports for those people? You know, we can't continue growth without recognizing that, as a community, we have responsibility for the holistic health of the people who want to come and live here. So, I just wanted to share that currently, we have, we have a, we have a fully-funded provinc, island health-funded, provincially-funded, regionally-funded, mental health service called the Urgent Short Term Assessment and Treatment. In Sook, we have twenty-eight hours of that service, fully-funded, in which people get service for free, nine to ten sessions usually, to support them getting to a better place. We, as an organization at Sook Family Resource Society, gave the waitlist back to island health about a month ago, two months ago, because we had seventy-two people that we were trying to keep track of, waiting for supports. The acuity of the cases that we're seeing in that service has risen exponentially since the onset of COVID, so, that's an issue that we're dealing with as well. We have no idea at this point where island health is in that waitlist, because we're not taking those calls any longer. The support that we've asked direct help with from council is, is an affordable counseling service that is a sliding-scale service, that is, works as an adjunct to the free part-time service that we have funded by the, by the province. That's for the adults. In the youth sphere, we have also part-time, as you can see from the budget that we've put forward, there are several funders for that service. Everybody's cobbling in a little bit of help. I asked Louise this morning about the waitlist as an update there, and I think it's about four months now, is that right?
It's six months for youth and four months for counseling.
So, from a, from a professional standpoint, that just doesn't fly. People will find, you know, I don't know what they find. They will go back home and, and-
And they turn to other things to help them, such as substances, or they become homeless, or they exhibit antisocial behavior, or other-
They get involved with the justice system. So, I mean, without getting into too many personal stories, we want to paint a picture of the need in our community, in terms of, you know, the urgency of the support that we need.
And COVID has really just kind of exponentially added to that, so there's been a thirty to fifty percent increase in demand for our services over the last twelve months. So, the pressure is just building, and we just, and the funding has steadily decreased because there's so much COVID funding, that it's, it's getting harder and harder to attract grants. So, I guess, from our perspective, we kind of see it as a multi-layered, multi-pronged attack on the problem. Some funding come from federal, some come, coming from provincial, and some locally. And this is kind of, we had a look at all the other neighborhood houses, all the other social welfare organizations around the area, and all of them get some of their funding from the local government. The Pacific Center, for example, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand to youth care, Quadra, a hundred and fifty-four thousand, James Bay, forty-two thousand, Oakland's, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, we, all of them get at least partial funding for their counseling and their youth services from the local government. We're not asking council to float our programs, we're just asking for a little bit of ongoing funding, so we can, so we can help support the local community, the people that are really in need. It's the people that don't have, the people that don't have benefits with their jobs, the people that are struggling, that need, that need the reduced fee counseling.
I want to say that our agency, Sook Family Resource Society, we've been in Sook for thirty-four years, we're highly accountable, we work very hard, we do a darn good job. Our focus is to work with families, to be able to be safe, people to be safe in their families, to stay in their families, so that they can stay housed, so that we don't have family breakdown as a primary reason for homelessness, as an example, or single parenthood, or, yeah, and so, counseling is a huge tool that is very effective in supporting families to stay together and to stay safe. And so, you know, I just, I really want to make that point really clear, that we work with a lot of families that are struggling with challenges of family violence, isolation, poverty, lot of stress right now, and, and the need is really, is high. I was at a meeting on the weekend where I heard a lovely comment, and that was that Sook shows up for Sook. Counselor Bateman was there, heard the same idea expressed in the fact that we do support each other in our community. Somebody needs food, we make sure there's a loaf of bread. So, my, our question, our query is, yeah, please rethink the recommendation that's come forward from the staff to support a service agreement. A service agreement would help us not come begging, so to speak, on a regular basis, as we have been for many years, and thank you for the supports in the past. It's exhausting. Yeah, we'll answer any questions, if we can.
Okay, thank you very much for being available tonight. Just a couple of questions for myself. So, with the waitlist, was that a four-to-six-month wait? So, if a caller calls in, it's four to six months from when they call you, and there's no difference between an adult and a youth? It's four to six-
Youth, we're looking at more like six months.
Youth are six months?
Yeah.
Ooh, and that's a lifetime for young people.
Yeah.
Really, it's, when you're younger, it's a long time.
Yeah.
And then, in terms of island health, there was something about the, can't remind you, something about hours, they provide so many hours, or can you clarify that?
Island health, the island health urgent- The Island Health Urgent Short Term Assessment and Treatment Support in SUK is twenty-eight hours a week.
Oh, I see. They provide twenty-eight hours a week?
That's correct, a free service. So, that is what provincial or regional counselling support in our community looks like right now.
So, that's for urgent cases, people, uh, and quite intense cases, often people with personality disorders, serious mental health issues.
Okay. So, and that's it? That's all they provide?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, I have a few more comments, but I'm going to wait on that. I'll just see if there's any other questions first, questions? Go ahead, councillor McMath.
You mentioned a lot of other municipalities that have support from all tiers of government. Do those municipalities see, uh, reduction in contributions from the province or feds because their municipalities are contributing?
Not that I, not that I know of.
No.
They, they, they get...
No, it's actually, yeah, it's actually a, a leveraging encouragement for other funders when they see that there is support from a municipality, um, and especially if it's consistent, then that gives us the opportunity to champion the local supports, and, uh, nobody wants to take responsibility for the full bailiwick, so, um, that's, you know, that's a leveraging support that is really helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for our, okay, our speakers?
Yeah, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but, uh, I was talking to Director Hicks, uh, and we were both discussing a drug rehab centre in the CRD, and maybe you can help me out here, because, uh, the first recommendation is council director staff to add advocacy for mental health support, and I assume a drug rehab centre would be part of a mental health, that would fit into that statement?
Um, sure, that's one, that's one...
And can you tell me where the nearest drug rehab centre is for us? Is it in Anima?
With a space or without a space?
Well, well, where is the, like, my understanding is that there's none in Greater Victoria.
No, I don't believe there is.
Okay, that, that's, you have, thank you very much, because, uh, I'd like to add that to the advocating part of it, but, uh, maybe it's already there, I don't know. Thank you for that.
Other questions? Go ahead, councillor Bateman.
Yeah, um, I'm, through you to our, our delegation here, um, I'm curious your thoughts on, um, the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions' Pathway to Hope program, because as I understand it, um, we're in a bit of a golden age, and that here in B.C., and it was only in 2017 this ministry was founded, it's the first such ministry in Canada, and just last month, a progress report on that Pathway to Hope, um, uh, master plan came out. Could you comment on your thoughts on how that's working?
You have a comment?
I do, you go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, so, the, the funding has, through that, has gone through the Ministry of Child and Family Development, and, um, in SUK, they have two youth, um, counsellors. They're so inundated that they don't offer individual counselling, they only offer groups. So, the funding is limited, and, um, it's not flexible, and it's not individual, which really is very limited.
As well, I think that, um, I can't speak to your specific, um, Pathway to Hope, but I do observe and know that a lot of the effort of the new ministry, still new, Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions, is focused on the opioid crisis. And, um, and it, that is a huge, if I may say so, political option that has been chosen by that ministry to focus on, and so, a lot of the prevention work that is required, um, is just not happening. And so, yeah, we certainly haven't seen any support from that ministry in our community.
We thought we were going to be able to apply for grants through them, and we did apply, and, um, the money was mostly funded through the government, the government, to different government organisations.
It strikes me, looking at that progress report, there's a number of, of, um, initiatives underway, the integrated child and youth teams, that apparently are mobile and will, will get out and about, um, the...
No individual service.
They haven't arrived in SUK. Okay, this, this is very interesting, because the Foundry Centres are being, seen, Foundry Youth Centres, um, have opened in eleven communities, and there's an additional eight incoming, but none of them are on, on this, our region.
The Foundry, the closest Foundry Centre is in Victoria.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in eleven other communities. And I guess there's this new initiative of, in the COVID area era, we've entered the virtual realm, so Foundry Virtual is being touted as a wonderful access point for people who perhaps can't get into your program, but they can get online with a counsellor. What, what is your feeling around the impacts of, of that kind of somewhat impersonal counselling?
Um, it doesn't work so well with youth. Youth don't tend to engage online nearly as effectively as adults do. So, um, it's, we, um, in COVID, we had firsthand, um, experience with trying to engage our youth online, and ninety percent of them, um, at least ninety percent of them, did not engage.
Right, okay.
Very, very difficult, yeah. So, I'd say a lot of youth just wouldn't be receiving services because of that.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, we, we, there is advocacy underway. The mayor and I were on a call with Minister Malkinson back last month at UBCM, and, um, we were able to state that here in SUK, we, we donate, that we donated, we granted you twenty-one thousand dollars through our COVID Safe Restart Programme. And, um, so advocacy's ongoing, but just to be clear, apart from that, Ministry of Family Development funding for your youth outreach programme, we're not seeing any provincial money, a gaming commission as well, coming to these programmes.
Yes.
Eleven thousand?
So, small bits of money, yes. Um, the Ministry of Children and Family Development funds about thirty percent of our youth service currently. It isn't helping with the waitlist, though.
Right. Okay, thank you. Oh, and one more question, and that's through, um, through you to Ms. Gray. How much is left in that COVID Safe Restart Fund?
Through your worship, I believe it is, uh, one point, no, two-point-four million dollars is what's forecasted to be left at the end of 2021, um, based on, and then there is, at least currently in the current financial plan, for five, just under five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars allocated for future, for some initiatives that were approved in last year's budget to use COVID funding.
And have the, have the terms of those, that grant changed at all, or would, would this group be eligible still?
Uh, the, the COVID Safe Restart, it's, so now it's, those funds have been transferred into, uh, a district bylaw, so they're bound by the terms of the bylaw, um, which are the same terms from when we got the grant, so there's just a certain criteria they're allowed to use the funds for. Um, the, the COVID money, of course, doesn't renew, it's, it's a one-time funding, so it's not a sustainable long-term funding source.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor St Pierre?
Just a quick question through your worship to Ms. Gray. Uh, you mentioned initially, or already at the beginning of your, your short presentation, that there were problems with, uh, the service agreements, but you didn't actually, you know, go into any details, uh, that we have quite a strong presentation in terms of maybe looking at those details.
Your worship, if, uh, if I could, I'll respond to councillor St Pierre. I had the opportunity to spend some quality time with Ms. Logan's on the weekend as well, as long, as well as councillor Bateman, and, uh, I, I don't think there's any dispute on this side of the table that more resources are needed, uh, and stable, reliable resources are needed for mental health. The report that's in front of council today is just suggesting that the property tax is not the right fiscal tool to deal with this issue. It's a provincial issue, personal income tax, uh, income tax in general is a much better fiscal tool, and that's why we're suggesting that we, um, support the UBCM work, uh, that came out of conference this year, on the advocacy side to make more funds available for this important work.
Okay, councillor McMath?
We can do both of those things, though. And so, it's coming, those taxes are coming from this community, but it's this community that needs these supports, and you can tell, like, SUK is such an isolated community, that when you have these big projects, they never touch communities like ours. So, I totally appreciate what you're saying, but I'm gonna throw my favourite line at you, which is, there's a time to follow the rules and there's a time to do the right thing, and I think this is the perfect example of that.
Do you mind just turning off your microphone? Sorry, it's just the feedback when more than one microphone is on. Um, so I'm looking at the staff report and at the recommendation, and I completely appreciate where staff is coming from on this. Um, I'm the one that always says, we're not going to accept the download, and we need to upload the download. I struggled with the minister meeting that we had, councillor Bateman was on the call, and in part, it was like, what is the ask that we're going for? And, because it's always describing the ask, and then it's twenty minutes on a telephone call, because that was the format we were in. And I used the service agreements and what, not the service agreements, but the grant funding that we did this year to frame my ask, that this is what's happening in our community now, and we need more support from the province. I didn't get anywhere in that call. It was frustrating, it, it's, it was not one of my worst advocacy moments, but it was just the way they send you in a circle. So, I've been down that with the school board and with the province, and each side sends me back and forth, and I, I hate that, because I'm not in a game of pong. Uh, these are real issues affecting real lives here, and I don't need to go back and forth each time. The, the call with the minister was similar to that, and in the end, it was like, well, just continue the work you're doing with Island Health. I'm like, but that's, that's nothing for me to work with, um, which is why I was asking what Island Health was providing, and it's still, there's a gap showing up in our community here. Uh, I see this similar, you know, and I, I can agree that we don't want things to all fall on the local government, but we need more time. So, part of it was finding a way, when, when we put this motion forward, was to put together a service agreement, it gives us the benefit of time to understand more of the problem, and then to bring it back to the province and saying, look, you know, like, it, there's a time where we will run out of our ability to fund this, and we need you to step up more with things like, necessary things like prenatal care. When I hear the province saying they want to care for individuals from the cradle or pre, all the way to the grave, they're missing prenatal care entirely, and expecting everyone to just drive into Victoria is a big barrier, especially those showing up at the ninth hour. Uh, it, it, it doesn't happen, they won't go. I think six months for, for young people is, it's too long. They will turn to other means that are unhealthy, and maybe even, and there's predators lurking all over social media, and in all those, there's always guidebooks coming out. I'm a parent now, how to keep your kids safe online, because of the predators that are online as well, and that are savvy about it. Um, in terms of advocacy, I have no problem advocating more on this, it's just understanding the problem statement, and in order to get there, we need to have an, a, a, a working partnership where we can work together to understand the ask. We had successes with access to primary care when we were in the dynamic there, but then it was also SUK contributing funds and time and space and the like, and the province and Island Health responding. So, the pandemic threw kind of a lot of that work out the window, we're kind of on the sideburner for obvious reasons, um, because our health practitioners have their hands full right now, but there will come a time when we'll be able to still go back to those and have a better understanding of what the changing need is. And so, I want to put forward a different motion for council to consider, uh, and that would be that council, the first part, find that council directs staff to add advocating, advocating for mental health supports to the strategic priorities chart, because we're already doing it, so that makes sense. The second part would be, and that council directs, and that the committee of the whole recommend to council, that council directs staff to bring forward a draft service agreement with the SUK Family Resource Society, starting in the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. So, it's basically what our former resolution was. I appreciate this report that's come forward. Um, can I just get someone to move that? Move that, okay, thank you, councillor McMath. So then, it's, it's just to get it on the floor, and then, uh, so that I can speak a bit more to it. I appreciate that we, as local government, can't fund everything, but we also need to be able to frame what our problem is in order to get the province to fund it. And if we're not doing that, they aren't going to do anything, they won't respond. And where we've had successes, like I mentioned with the access to healthcare, is by acknowledging and being part of the solution together. And so, by me chairing the working group, or chairing with Island Health, we're able to access more resources than we ever had, had we not been a part of that. And then, it was the case of, okay, we had talked a bit about going into mental health, because we know that it's growing, but it's not understanding the problem yet. So, in order to frame it and to advocate for it, we need to understand more about it. So then, with the service agreement and sort of why that was proposed then and why I'm suggesting it now, is it gives good accountability, it also gives us the reporting details that we need, so we're just not making it up, you know, so that we go into these meetings prepared with what's actually happening on the ground, and it gives us a way to, to be, you know, to hold the province accountable or to find out where our successes are. Uh, even, you know, I chaired or was involved with the local government financial resilience paper, and it's just sitting with the province. The last document, Strong Fiscal Futures, was extremely well-done in 2016. The province at the time received it and filed it and did nothing, and now the same problem is in, is, exists five years later. So, we kept that as a reference tool, but then we also went more and build on local government financial resiliency, and we'll see where it goes, but for now, they're, they've received it, they haven't done anything yet. So, we'll, you know, meanwhile, we've advocated for our share of the carbon tax after they got rid of CARB, we've advocated for, uh, our share of cannabis revenue, uh, after advocating and doing all our part in terms of the recreation of legal cannabis from the feds and the province, and we still don't have that money yet, even though we've all done our part. So, I get concerned, and in the meantime, we have a problem in our community. So, I think of the users we hear about from the food bank. They access the food bank for maybe a year, maybe eighteen months, and then they stop, because their, the families are whole again, they just needed time to get by, and now many of them contribute and are big supporters of the food bank, which keeps it wholesome and full for everyone. And that's where I see a lot of, where this is, with the stress of the pandemic, it's real. The domestic violence, the police calls, the neighbourhood arguments that are starting up, uh, all of that, and then, at the centre are children that are hearing and enduring all this, and wondering what's going on. And there is instability, and not everybody has benefits through their work. Many of our residents don't, those that are part-time on contract, working in the service sector, they don't have anything. And those that have been laid off or lost work for injury, illness, eventually, those things run out, and they're, they're not available. So, just giving someone a helping hand to get by, thing makes a big difference. In terms of a, an addiction rehab facility that, um, was mentioned, I think that's a whole other argument, or a whole other discussion. Uh, farmer complex, I'd like to know where in the Wanda Fuka we can locate it, because that would be great. But meanwhile, it's, uh, it's just keeping our residents whole and trying to keep some family units together. And I think where the SUK Family Resource shines is that for anyone that went in for prenatal care, or baby talk, or childhood vaccinations and all those things, of course, that'll be the place you're going to go to when, when you hear your family unit breaking down. So, I, I think that's where we work together on this. So, I'm hoping that council will support this. Other speakers on this, I'll go to councillor Betos.
Uh, yeah, through your worship to staff, uh, uh, my concern is, uh, I don't have a big problem with this, other than, uh, a service agreement, what's the usual time limit in that? Is it a three-year service agreement, or one year, two? What would, I'm just asking, because I, it's the next question. Was it three years normally?
Uh, three years, there historically have been for five years.
Five years.
The current ones are five years, and they expire in 2022. So, uh, the recommendation would be to enter a one-year agreement with SUK Family Resource, so then, all of the service agreements could be presented back to council for consideration for renewal after the next municipal election?
I forgot to add that in, we might need to add that as an amendment, and I would suggest it's more than a year, it's two years, at least. Ms. Machada?
Yeah, I, I was, I thought I was, had sort of a follow-up question about that.
Okay, let me just, I get a, a query from staff, and I'll come back to you.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, just a reminder, we should be doing public input on the item before consideration of the motion?
Yeah, I noticed that, it's just the way this is structured, so, we didn't, it wasn't flagged on the previous one, so, we have a motion here, I'll need to go to that. We still have this all being referred up to council, which will follow in a special council meeting, so there'll be opportunity for a public input there. Councillor Betos?
Yeah, and, and following on that, of course, is, uh, we are going to be doing the... Yeah, and, and following on that, of course, is we are going to be doing the budget next, and if somewhere along the line, we need to trim the budget. If we, this hasn't even come to us yet, right? So would it be, that amount of money be placed in the proposed budget? Because if it comes back and we vote for it, that's going to impact this year's budget, correct? And next year's budget, if you do two years. How, how will that work?
Three years, correct. The similar situation happened with the SUC Chamber of Commerce last year, where money was allocated in, supported by council, so money was allocated in the 2021 budget, and then, in early 2021, staff entered negotiations with Chamber of Commerce to come up with and agreed services to provide and sign the agreement.
Okay, and I guess my question is, you know, if we okay this tonight, and that's, that amount of money's thrown in for this upcoming budget, and we have to go back and do some chopping, would this be an item that could be on the chopping block? Or are we, we, we have to find another one to chop? I mean, I thought-
That would depend on council.
Well, I-
I can answer that. It would depend on council.
Well, it's not locked in, is what I'm saying.
Well, all, once, through your worship, once a service agreement is signed, in theory, there's terms in that, they're not in theory, there's terms in that agreement that have clauses for termination. So if, if there was a reason why the district wasn't going to fund that, we would just have to look at the specific terms in there and, and see for the out.
Yeah, I won't put you on the spot anymore. The thing is, you know, I know we're going to go into some difficult questions with the budget, because it, the way it sits now is, you know, not going to work too much with the public, and I just want to know if that's one of the things that could be on the chopping block, and I guess it could be. But anyways, I'm willing to support it for a two-year process. Thanks.
Council Bateman.
Yeah, I was just wondering about a friendly amendment to part two here. Given the staff's concern around property taxes going towards whatever provincial responsibilities, that this final piece, service agreement, beginning in 22, 2022, in the amount of 30,000 to be funded from the COVID-19 Safe Restart Reserve Fund.
Okay. But that's an amendment that will add to be funded from the COVID-19 Safe Restart Funds. So that's moved. There's no seconders, so we'll call, we'll look at an amendment, a vote on that amendment. So it's identifying the source as the COVID-19, and I think we meant this to be a two-year agreement, so can that be part? I didn't put one in the motion, so we'll make that as another, we'll get to that as another amendment, because I didn't put that in when I made the motion. So the first one is to identify the source. So that's moved by Council Bateman. Discussion on the source. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you, and that's not property taxes. So another amendment would be to add in a two-year service agreement. I think one year is too fast. It won't give us the information we need to advocate. Two years will help, and maybe we'll be out of COVID by then, maybe. Just, just saying. Probably not, but-
One, two, three, four.
So, can we have, I'll propose the amendment to add a two-year agreement. Council St. Pierre is going to move it. That's great. Any comment on the two-year? Council McMath?
So the ones that we currently have, they expire the end of this year?
In 2022. They're all set to expire December 2022. So then if you did, if council chose a two-year term, then SUC Family Resource would be coming back to council in the fall of 2023, I would imagine, looking to extend or renew their service agreement. And just to confirm, the COVID funding most likely will not be available in two years from now. So a property tax funding source would be most likely a funding source for this.
It's just going to get a little bit awkward with the lining up, because they're going to be coming back at a different time, and if we want to protect it, we could extend it.
Then we could make it longer. I just think that having it just because the others expire, they have five years of history, 10 years of 15 years.
I meant going the other direction.
Okay, so that's where I would rather not just have it a year, because with some of the other ones, we have years, decades of agreements to, and feedback and reports to draw them, to justify the reasoning. One year wouldn't be enough time. It needs to be at least two years, but, or longer. That's up to council. Council McMath still has the floor.
I'm good for now.
Okay. So we're on two-year. Anything on two-years? Council Betos?
Yeah, just going with Ms. Gray said, she said that the, cannot be funded by the COVID money in the second year, or up to two years? Could we, could we do two years with the COVID funding, and then have to go to the taxpayer?
Correct. Through your worship, the plans will be presented forward to council through the 2022 budget development, to provide some recommendations on uses for the current COVID funding, and it's anticipated those recommendations will use up significantly all of the funding for some significant projects that are required. So that, that will be the ask to council, is to consider using COVID funds for, for these, for that project. And so that's all I was trying to state, is most likely that, that funding would be used up for that project if it's supported by council.
So if you got $60,000 less, then your new ask will be $60,000 less, I guess. Because if we tie up $60,000 to this for two years, out of the COVID-
For sure, yeah. $60,000 is definitely manageable. I was just more, the longer term, after 2023, that COVID funding most likely will not be available.
I thought there was a, a legal reason why we couldn't use it after two years.
No, just because it's not-
Just that we might use it up, yeah.
Correct. It's not supposed to be an ongoing forever funding source for districts.
You do your magic with your calculator. I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll call the question on the amendment, please. All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. And now on the motion as it's been amended. And so that is that the committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to add advocating for mental health supports to the strategic priorities chart, and that the committee of the whole recommend council direct staff to bring forward a draft two-year service agreement, beginning in the amount, beginning in 2020, an amount of 30,000 to be funded from the COVID-19 Safe Restart Fund. So that is our main amended motion. Okay? Any discussion on that? Council St. Pierre.
Just a quick comment. I'm respective, I respect the staff's stance on where the money should be coming from, and the idea that it should be provincial responsibility, health should be a provincial responsibility, and at this point, we're taking on responsibility that we can't necessarily set aside. But I do think the community connection, and making sure that our youth are taken care of, is actually also the responsibility of the district to some degree, especially when people are falling through the cracks. And I think that in this particular case, nobody except for the feds and the province has really, really deep pockets, but if we all step up to the plate, hopefully we can make a bigger difference. And I think that allowing stable funding to be in place to lever, and allowing those funds to be leveraged, is a huge benefit in this particular case, so I strongly support the motion.
Anything else? Okay, we'll call a question then. All those in favor, please? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, thank you for your presentations.
Just a moment to say thank you for that consideration, and very timely in light of the work that we're doing with Island Health around the review of the adult health, mental, adult mental health supports for our community. So, yeah, I think in terms of reporting and accountability, we can pull that together to bring that forward to that Island Health Committee.
It still has some steps to go through.
Yeah.
So-
Smart move. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I just want to get back into the public input piece that I did not include here, because it's, it's just the way it's laid out. So what is the best way for us to put this in the committee of the whole here? Because if it's, if I read this to follow each item, where does it follow?
Wherever there's a presentation, the public input would immediately follow.
Okay, but it follows each item.
Yes.
So not all of them will have a presentation. I'll just ask if there's many, any members of the public that we're here to speak to, 7.1 or 7.2? I'm sorry that I missed you. Okay, we're on track. Okay, so that works. We need to get Council Logan's. There she is. Okay, welcome back. So 7.3 Strategic Priorities Update, and then after we get the staff report, I'll ask members of the public to speak on those, on that item, before we get into any further council Q and A part. Go ahead, please, Ms. McInnes.
Thank you, worship. I have a proposition for you and council. I do have a presentation that would likely be 25 minutes-ish, but I am cognizant of the other important items that are on the agenda tonight, and specifically the budget item. So I, I wonder whether you just want to ask some questions on the report that's in the agenda, or whether you'd rather me go through some of the detail.
That's a good question. I think it was more thoughts, members of council? Council McMath? Did you want questions? Did you want the 20-minute presentation?
Although very tempting, I think for public education, I would like you to speak to it.
Council Bateman?
Yeah, perhaps we could set a five-minute limit on Mr. McInnes, given how skillfully Ms. Russell managed hers. So you might want to just hit the high points. Thank you.
What's that process called, where it's pachacucha or something, where you have a, where the slides just go all by themselves, and you got to keep up?
Over to you, Mr. McInnes, for your presentation.
I will quickly go through the now and the next items. There are items on the presentation for the operational pieces and the advocacy pieces as well. So the first now item on the current strategic priorities chart is the engagement plan for 2022 five-year financial plan. It is complete. It's in process, and we really look to build on this for future years. So the planning and budget cycle really is going to be the bedrock of our communications and engagement strategy going forward. So hopefully, you've seen some improvements in the 2022 process over the 2021 process, but you'll see more of that tonight in, in the coming meetings. Capital project reporting updates, you'll, that's next on the agenda tonight, and that started in April of 2021. So council really wanted to see more detailed reporting on our capital projects. Ms. Gray will go through that in the next agenda item, and has done an admirable job so far since we started in April of 2021. Perform a follow-up culture audit. One of the strategic priorities of council was to improve our organizational culture. We have done some incredible work. We have a cross-departmental culture committee that is doing some work, but we are running into some challenges. We had a staff meeting set for September 29th, and the fourth wave of COVID put a stop to that. So we haven't been able to meet a lot in, in person, and a lot of this work really needs face-to-face work, so. The priority is to do a follow-up assessment before the end of the year. Our consultant from the Bear Culture Center is not available right now. She's had some personal tragedies in her life, so we may not meet the timeline by the end of the year to do the follow-up assessment, but we will do that as soon as we can. I think the, the numbers from the follow-up assessment will show some good progress, notwithstanding the fact that we haven't had much time to do this work in person. Review the org chart for new positions in 2022. That is complete. You'll see what the priority positions are. And just a reminder to the public, the process that council has, has agreed to is that non-market growth, so that is new taxation or new revenue from new houses being built or new businesses starting in SUC, is put aside and not into general revenue, and that is put aside for growing our administration as our community continues to grow. If our community stops growing, then the argument is we should not have to continue to grow our staffing numbers. But you'll see what, what we've proposed for 2022 for non-market growth. Consider climate action, social mobilization. So funding has been approved for the development of the project. We've actually extended additional funding for the work that the social mobilization group is doing with the Climate Action Committee. You'll see in the recommendations coming up that the work to implement is part of the budget, and implementation will begin in 2022. Consider 7% solution for GHG reductions. There was a Climate Action Committee special meeting on Thursday last night, so this has changed a little bit, but when this report was prepared for council, this is what council had approved for the 7% solution for 2022. I believe Council Bateman may speak later about the meeting and the recommendations that will come forward subsequent to the meeting last week. The strategic framework for climate adaptation and mitigation, as you saw a few meetings ago, from Elizabeth Lang, Dr. Lang presented this graphic. So the mitigation and adaptation work is in the, the diagram. The dark shaded sections is what the Climate Action Committee is committed to working on, and the lighter shaded are things that we will have to have further direction from council on, and work on funding models to complete this work. Complete the 2021 official community plan. The draft plan is out for review, as you know. Project is on time and on budget, and really happy with the degree of community engagement. I think that the committee is, still has their work to do, to bring the draft forward to council, and ultimately get this approved by the end of the year. Parking and wastewater criteria for secondary suites, we do continue to struggle to fit this into our work plan, and it's, the request is that we move this to the next item, and it'll be part of the 2022 work plan when the budget is adopted. So our planning and development staff are committed to this work, but fitting it into the work plan right now with everything else on the docket has proved a challenge for us. The AAP for John Phillips Memorial Park, as you know, it's complete. We will be moving forward, the direction that council has given administration, is to work with the Lions Club to have a public meeting with the lease agreement particulars, the development permit application process, further community engagement, along with preliminary design. I met with members last week, and I'm not sure, Council Betos, if you want to quickly leave the room, or?
Yeah, I could be in conflict here, because I don't remember the two lions about park group events, and I'll miss McInnes to speak to this. I will take my bar off. Coconut.
The conundrum or the predicament that the Lions Club finds itself in is, if they do considerable design work and spend money on the design work, and ultimately the lease does not get approved by council, they're going to be out that money. So a suggestion was to share in the risk of that, and if the lease is not signed, that the District of SUC reimburs the Lions Club for that work. We get all of the design work, and if we are to use it, or if a facility is to go into John Phillips Memorial Park, we have that design work to work with later on. So I will, I'd love some feedback from council on that proposal.
Are you looking for an answer to that now?
Yeah, I would rather not continue to put time and effort into this, if this is not something that council's willing to consider. They do have some pro bono work that will be done on the design. They've got some members that have the professional qualifications to do it.
Council St. Pierre, did you want to answer that, or?
I don't know about answering, but given that we had the SPA recommendation around spending some money on basically an anchor facility for festivals and such, and we put that on the back burner, because we were waiting for the AAP and everything else to resolve itself, it sounds like there was an appetite for potentially putting some money towards some design work around a need that's been recognized in the community. So if we end up with the design work, are we not, it's more or less something that was under, under consideration anyway, I guess is what I'm suggesting.
Well, I think it's similar to that of the search and project, where they needed- to have the project to assert, in order to apply for the grant, it had to be at a certain state. And so that's where they were, we passed a resolution for the group to draw from the, pardon me, the reserve fund that we have in place for senior facilities. Sorry, my cough now is getting to me. So in some ways, when you hear from public, what is it going to look like? We don't know that because it needs to be designed. And so I am amenable to reimbursing the Lions. If it doesn't, go ahead. We just need to identify the source. But I'm going to cough, so I'm going to pass this to Councilor Logan.
Yeah, it's a bit of a big decision to discuss on the fly, but my initial thoughts are that it's an enticing proposal because it's sort of a win-win in a sense. But what I struggle with is that the onus is on the Lions to prove this project to the public. So I feel like that is a budget item that they should be responsible for. I'm not completely comfortable paying for a project if it's not going ahead, especially since it's a contentious issue. I think that's the difference here between the search and project was that that project grew from a plebiscite that was largely supported in this community. And whereas this project is sort of happening the opposite way, and there's pros and cons. So that's where I sort of struggle with that proposal. But I'm open to hearing what the rest of council thinks.
I think we just need more information, because I don't know what we're reimbursing for. Like, where does it start and finish? Councilor McMath?
So are they, are they going to stop if we do not acquiesce to this? You said there was hesitancy for them to continue?
They, you know, one of the things that we talked about early was part of this proposal is that the District of Sook purchased their land on Murray Road in exchange for the lease agreement. So, you know, it's, we're getting parkland for parkland, basically. And then they would use the proceeds from that sale to do their design work. If this doesn't go through, and they sell their Murray Road property to the District of Sook, then they have nowhere to do their work. So that's sort of the conundrum they have. Whether they walk, I'm not sure whether that'll be the case or not.
What is like the end, there seems to be like some sort of anticipation that it's not going to be successful. Why is that?
It would only be because council doesn't ultimately sign the lease agreement.
Councilor Bateman?
Yeah, I had a quick glance at your mayor's letter today, and it had several paragraphs on the Lions center.
Which letter, the one that?
I don't know. There was a monthly letter.
The monthly letter. Okay, thank you.
It would be.
My central four letters today, I don't know what you're talking about.
It would be wonderful to hear that read into the record here tonight, because it did give some larger clarity on this process going forward, if you can find it.
I'm just thinking out loud.
Okay, while you're searching, I had a question. Do you have a sense of the design cost?
I don't at this point. One of the, what we talked about when we met on Thursday was somewhere in the $25,000 to $40,000 range.
Okay, so here is the letter. Try not to cough. Progress has also been made with our Parks and Trails master plan, the bluff staircase repairs, and the whiff and spit, da-da-da-da-da, and the multi, that's multi-sport box. Sorry, it was in the wrong paragraph. And then at the end, it says, plans are also being finalized on the Fence Dog Park, and the conversation will continue on John Phillips Memorial Park. Specific to the Lions Club proposal at John Phillips Memorial Park, council has directed staff to bring back a report forwarding, bring a report forward containing the lease details, the development permit process, and options for further engagement. I recognize there was confusion with the alternative approval process and concerns about why this path was identified. The park has considerable history and has been the focus of several community conversations over the years. John Phillips Memorial has been identified as a community park with purposes that include, one, a destination park that serves residents and visitors, two, forms the physical, forms the visual, physical, and social focus of our community, and three, offers natural features and/or built facilities. The Lions' proposal presented an option to advance community amenities for consideration to determine viability of this option the AAP took place. With future development in the area, we'll include new housing and a significant transit corridor while also being connected by safe bike and pedestrian access. This is an opportunity to action smart growth and ensure our community has universally accessible amenities to meet our growing needs. At this time, no decision has been made on the future of John Phillips Memorial Park. And then it just goes on to other items. So for your ask, Mr. McInnes, because I wasn't prepared to think about this, I do agree, it's a motion on the fly, which we tell ourselves not to do. So in demonstrating that back, is it not possible for you to bring something forward at an upcoming meeting for us to consider?
Absolutely.
Because if we say, I'm like, okay, it sounds fine, but then what are the budget impacts? I'm assuming it'll come from a staff contingency fund of some sort, because it's coming from staff and not a council contingency ask? So we'll leave it for you to make that determination and bring it forward.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to know if it was a full stop or not. So be happy to bring a report back to subsequent meeting.
Wait, Councilor McMath is giving me the eye.
Is it, it seems like a very odd predicament to put ourselves in now, because should we choose not to pass it? Or should, like, it almost, I feel like it could set us up for pushing through a pass so we're not out money. I just don't love that position. Granted, if it's only $20,000, it's not such a huge impact, and I don't think it would change the outcome. But it's, yeah, it's really hard to make that decision until we see what that number is.
Your Worship to Councilor McMath, absolutely understand that. I'm just trying to do my best to bring back the information that council has asked me to. So, you know, the lease agreement, the development permit process, an engagement plan, that's easy stuff. The design work is going to, is going to require some money to be spent.
So on that, then, with this report, then, when it comes back, then even that sort of a notation that expresses the concern that you outlined, and the concerns that the Lion would probably be just helpful to include, we've asked for a preliminary design. This is a barrier to achieving that. And then we could take it all in with the report when we look at some of these other pieces. And let's say council says, okay, we want more engagement with the public first before we commit anything, then at least we can maybe advance those pieces. And then when the public shows up and says, well, what does it look like? Okay, we're not there yet. It's still a concept. I mean, it's similar to that of a rezoning for me. When we rezoned lands, we don't know really what they look like. We're just talking about the uses. Like, it doesn't even give, there's nothing. There's just basically blocks, is what we've been told by staff. And it's like, do you provide the zone in this area? It doesn't, when we get into the development permit, then we start talking about forming character and all those other pieces. So we know that comes after. So I kind of look at it in that way. Does that help? No? Councilor Bateman, then Logan's?
Yeah, that helps me. I think critical here is that public engagement piece. So it would be wonderful in your next report to see what that would look like, because there's still, you know, so many, yeah, there's a need for further discussion on all this. Thank you.
Councilor Logan's?
I think that you made some good points, Mayor Tate. And what that says to me is that neither party should move ahead with any funding or additional funds being allocated prior to public engagement. I think the intent was for us to have public engagement prior to moving forward. So that's what I would like to see is the public engagement piece. And if that means there's no preliminary design, I think that's okay, because we can like, well, not we, again, the onus is on the Lions to provide a drawing or a vision of some sort that tells the public what they want to see there. But yes, I don't, I'm not really open to entertaining funding this further until we receive more public engagement on the process.
Yeah, that makes sense. And that's where I think it'll be more the visionary aspect of it. Councilor St. Pierre?
I'm just remembering that Lion Danny Willis was very clear that the Lions were very open in terms of what the design might look like. And so I think it's extraordinarily important to have that public engagement, because if this is going to be a successful project that has the support of the community, meets the needs of the community, the design can actually take advantage of that engagement by including elements that are actually wanted. I know that the initial proposal from the Lions and what was in it didn't include things, for example, like anchoring the farmer's market, which is right nearby. And that would make a great deal of sense to me. I'd love to hear what the community would like to see in the park.
Yeah. So I think it's just too early to get there.
No, and I may have heard direction from council differently, because I had thought I had heard loud and clear that some sort of conceptual design was really important for the public engagement.
Okay. So we're good?
Excellent. So perhaps this presentation is going to take more than 20 minutes?
Are we finished on this? Can Councilor Betts return?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item on the strategic priorities chart is to work with search and to source funding for the complex in Lot A. We've heard that through a standalone report, so I will move past this one. Explore public plaza partnership with Evergreen Shopping Center. So as you are aware, the district has been exploring the potential of working with the owners of Evergreen Shopping Center to integrate both the Lot A development with the existing plaza, which may include driveway connections and cooperation on municipal services. This work has led to the terms of an agreement for purchase and sale between Evergreen Holding Centers, which is the owner of the shopping center, for the district to sell approximately one-half acre of land to Evergreen to facilitate a modest shopping center expansion with a residential component oriented to and integrated with Lot A development that we saw in the Charette Report. The agreement has been executed by Evergreen, and the next step will be for the district to sign the agreement. Working with our solicitors, the agreement contains a number of conditions for the protection of the district, including that is contingent upon the approval by the municipality of an acceptable development permit submission, which will be discussed over the next several months and included in future council meetings. The owners of Evergreen have significant depth of experience in both residential and development, residential and retail development. And accordingly, we're confident that the end product will be an asset to the district and will be in compliance with the Lot A Charette Report. The value of the transaction was established by a third-party appraisal by Colliers International, which was commissioned by the District of Sook. Complete our asset management investment plan. Work is being done on this plan, and really what this plan will do, it will tell us what our annual depreciation of our capital assets are, and it will give council a number of different strategies to choose from that will determine the annual amount of depreciation that we fund. So that could be anywhere from, I believe we put 0.5% of our depreciation into a reserve at this point. You will see what it would look like to fund 100% of depreciation. And in conjunction with our DCC bylaw that was presented to council last week, this is another way for us to ensure that repair, maintenance, and upkeep of our assets are in place as we continue to grow. Development annual planning and budget plan, I did talk a little bit about this with the first item on the chart, but really it's working to improve this process so it is the foundation of our annual planning and engagement process. So part of it is making sure that our community can see projects and items in year five of the five-year financial plan and see them build out through the, right up to the current year where they're finally funded. So we do have a number of projects right now that, like the sport box and the dog park, that sort of just showed up in early years in the five-year financial plan. Our hope is that we can see these projects get funded through the entire five-year financial plan. So when it comes to implementation, there's no big surprises for the community. Create policy aligning with climate adaptation mitigation strategy. So that policy framework that needs to come along after the, the strategies in place and some of the stuff that Ms. Russell talked about tonight on the policy side, for example, are the types of things that we need to make sure that once the climate change plan is in place, that it makes it into the policy framework. So some of these things do get done and change the trajectory of development in our community to a one that does justice to our low-carbon resilience framework. Rezoning, review zoning and bylaw recommendations, recommendations come from the new official community plan. So out of the OCP, there will be a number of planning and policy documents that need to be updated, not the least of which is the zoning bylaw, the subdivision development standards bylaw, and various other bylaws that will be impacted by the OCP once it is directed by, approved by council. Though, that's a next thing, so it's, that's not something that's anticipated to be done by the end of this year, but will be on the now items in January of 2022. The operational strategies, I will go through real quickly. Administration, the Community Economic Development Plan, that is in good shape. There's a Community Economic Development Committee meeting on Friday, which will be the last time that the committee has their chance to put their fingerprints on that plan, and it's scheduled to come to council in November of this year. The alternate office space for district staff, we have engaged an architect to look at this building and what future space requirements for this building are required. As council is aware, we are packed on top of each other downstairs here. So that architectural plan will give us some indications on expansion to this building. And again, those expansions will be in line with low-carbon resiliency, and will do those types of improvements to help us to net zero through the expansion. As Ms. Gray alluded to earlier, this will be the majority of the climate or the COVID restart money that this project will be geared towards. So to that discussion around COVID restart and, and property taxes, if the COVID restart money is spent on something that would lead to a property tax increase, there is an argument there that, you know, anything that comes out of the COVID restart money that would lead to a property tax increase really is a property tax increase, but that's semantics. Social media guidelines, Ms. Moog is working hard on the social media guidelines. We are looking at our strategy to launch other social media channels and the time and resource it may take to manage those channels. We're having lots of success with the Let's Talk Sook platform, where we can actually curate a space and have a much more meaningful discussion online. So I think that our social media guidelines and our strategy that was presented to council in January may change a little bit when you ultimately see it. But the website refresh is still a priority item. We hope to kick that off in earnest early in 2022. And then the public participation standards. And then the public participation standards, we do want to put some policy framework around our public engagement work. So based on the International Association of Public Participation, you'll see some, some policy work around how we do our engagement and the IAP, the IAP two spectrum really is on the left-hand side. It's just informing, just pushing information out all the way to the right-hand side of the spectrum, which we empower various components of our community to actually do work and not continually have to come back to council for concurrence to do that work. So you'll see some guidelines and some policy around what that may look like. Moving on to planning and development, the amenity reserve policy review and the agricultural land exclusion policy really will, they'll, they'll be part of what we talked about before, the OCP work and the need to do some, some policy work. Both of these pieces will be part of that policy review once the OCP is amended. And the development procedures bylaw update, I believe Mr. Paulo told me earlier today that that's in the works and should be seen by the end of, before the end of this year. Finance, the engagement plan for the 2022 five-year financial plan, we talked a little bit about that already today, and the reporting of capital projects, which you'll hear about next on the agenda, and the organizational review and proposed new positions for 2022, we talked about already. Moving on to operations, subdivision and development standards bylaw revisions, that has been a little bit of a challenge with us, for us as well. Applications do continue to come in, and the success that we've had with grant applications is a little bit of a double-edged sword because it does require us to do some work to design those projects and actually get them completed. But that work is still a priority, and we do have a, one of our operations members that is still doing a bunch of work on that. Design completion of key transportation corridors, you've seen this work, we've accelerated a number of pieces of this work. Some of the work that we were hoping to come in the next couple of years in the five-year financial plan are going to change a little bit. The Throop Road Connector is not challenging, we, we always knew it was going to be a challenging project, but likely will be pushed back to 2024, but we'll hear a little bit more about that in the budget discussions. Wastewater treatment plant expansion, that is well underway, I believe.
Tender?
Yeah, we tendered out a order of the services, so we're just engaging the design at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. The influent infiltration migration strategy for pump stations in our wastewater collection system, very important work, and this will be ongoing work. So you'll see a line item in the budget throughout the five-year financial plan to continue to do CCTV work on our wastewater collection system and at our lift stations and various components of the collection system. And the tree management purpose-built strategy for the tree management bylaw, you will see that before the end of the year as well.
End of the year to first quarter.
To the first quarter next year. Thanks, Jim. Corporate services, continue to update and modernize bylaw and policy. That framework is still a priority of corporate services, and we do have a list of policies and bylaws that we do want to bring. Our strategy has sort of been to make the community the whole, the place where that happens, but these agendas seem to fill up with a lot of stuff, so trying to fit that into our, our schedules with everything else that's going on is a little bit of a challenge for us, but it's important work and it still needs to be done, so we'll push that forward. And improve our records management program. We do have a records management position on staff now. Christopher is doing a great job to implement the Local Government Management Association process for records management and digitizing our records management and getting rid of some of the paper that we have in the building. Community safety, building maintenance for Station One renovation, so part of the architectural work that we've engaged is an expansion to the fire hall here, fire hall number one. There is money in the 2021 budget for that work. Just seeing where we are on the calendar right now, it's, it's likely that that will be carried forward and that work actually done in 2022. And the fire department master plan, we're likely at about 75% complete at this point. Advocacy issues, the wastewater transportation master plan grant, we did, as I believe the community is well aware of, $4.6 million from the ICIP environmental quality stream. So that is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade that is planned and two significant choke points in our collection system, new forest main from the lift station on West Coast Road, and we have a, a gravity main that goes in behind Maple Avenue that is at capacity. So tho, those three projects will be part of that work. The BC Active Transportation for Church Road, we were successful with $500,000 for that project, another $500,000 through BC Active Transportation for the Church Road Roundabout, and Active Transportation Grant for the Otter Point Road was just under $1.9 million, and we had a small grant of $50,000 from ICBC for line painting once new asphalt are on those right-aways. Enhanced transit service, the local area transit plan for Sook has been approved, challenges with COVID and moving that forward. Mayor Tate, I believe chairs or sits on the transit. So the transit plan will be implemented, but likely not until after step four of COVID before we have direct talks with BC Transit on where we're at with that. Little River Crossing, phase one of the Little River Crossing was funded through a grant from Bike BC, but after a number of applications to a number of funding streams, we have not been successful for the next phase, which is the actual river crossing, but the mayor has taken this matter directly to the MLA, and there's some fierce advocacy going on for this project. So stay tuned. Our regional health center, meetings occur every one to two months. The committee is working with Island Health and UBCM on gaps and mental health supports with a focus on the adult population. Mayor Tate continues to co-chair the Sook Health Committee with Island Health and chairs the Sook Healthcare Community Meetings as well. The UBCM meeting with Minister Dix happened on September 10th during or just before UBCM, local healthcare systems in Sook and the ongoing local planning and our increasing needs for improved services. Advocacy continues with the Ministry of Health, the Ministry of Mental Health, and BC Ambulance, and Mayor Tate has accepted an invitation to participate in the Transforming Family Justice Alliance, which is chaired by Chief Justice Robert Bowman. The pesticide and rodenticide bans, the, we did write letters to ministry in January of 2021. In July 27th, we did get a, a letter back from Minister Hayman, which announced the temporary 18-month ban of secondary anticoagulant rodenticides. The provincial local government rodenticide working group, Mayor Tate has accepted an invitation to sit on that working group. There's advocacy for a provincial ban on the sale of pesticides. We did get a letter back from Christina Zacharias Homer, who has stated to us that the province is sticking with an education-first approach for now for pesticide use, but we will continue to advocate for a provincial ban on this, with the idea being that a provincial ban is much more easy, easier for us to enforce and work with the province on as opposed to a number of communities having standalone bans, so. Vimq inclusion, the Integrated Police Units Regional Governance Committee has met, and there is an, an understanding that the District of Sook wants to be included in Vimq, but we, we keep running into just not a priority for the province to look at expanding that right now, so that advocacy work will continue as well. And that was part of the UBCM meeting with the Minister of, the Solicitor General to discuss participation, and that happened in Janu, July of this, of 2020. So we've been working on that for quite some time, but it doesn't seem to be moving real fast. First Nations relations as an advocacy issue, the Tamak Treaty meetings, Mayor Tate continues to represent the District of Sook at these meetings. CRD First Nations Relations Committee, Mayor Tate chairs that committee. The Sauk Nation Indigenous Housing Solutions Lab, Mayor Tate and joins Chief Planus on that, that committee, and they're doing some incredible work. We did do our joint release, news release, Stronger Together, after the announcements of the findings and camelops, and just an indication to our community that the Sauk Nation and the District of Sook have a very, very strong working relationship. And when it comes to First Nations issues, we look for guidance from the District of Sook or from the, the Sauk Nation to, to react to these types of things, and that relationship is extremely strong. Of course, on September 29th, we introduced flying of the Sauk Nation flag in front of our building, and you'll see it behind Mayor Tate now as a permanent fixture in council chambers as well. We have a MOU working group that meets every two months. Counselor Logans and Mayor Tate sit on that MOU working group with the Sauk Nation. And there has been a tremendous amount of consultation with the Sauk around our OCP, and you'll see the Sauk Nation with, really imprinted into our OCP and something that we on the staff side are certainly very proud of. The historical lands video, which is underway, which will be sort of a prelude to the OCP. One of the findings that we found through the, the MOU working group is that our tradition is the written record, the Sauk tradition is the verbal record and the story. So we're trying to marry those two things with these historical land videos, so we can hear the story in conjunction with the written document, which will be our OCP. And the last one is mental health and addiction resources, part of the Sook Homeless Coalition. Counselor Bateman has been appointed as the co-chair of the Sook Homeless Coalition. We worked together with the Coalition to apply, and we're very, and we're successful with a $412,000 grant through the Strengthening Communities stream. So the planning workshop that was on Saturday is the, the work to put a work plan around that money, and the action planning will be on November 20th. So again, just really important work in our community. Yeah, so plan, the session one was on October 16th, and the planning session number two will be on November 21st. Gas tax funding. Need to change my slide, thank you. This work started a long time ago, but in 2018, while serving as first VP and then as President of UBCM and as a FCM board member, Mayor Tate advocated for permanent doubling of the annual payment of the, to, to local government. Mayor Tate is also, while serving as President and past President of UBCM, participated in the selection committee for ensuring local government financial resiliency work that is being done. The next advocacy item is the municipal and regional district tax. Vancouver Tourism Vancouver Island is working on putting together the framework for the MRDT and will be working, and has been working with a Community Economic Development Officer to move that work ahead. There is money available for that work that Surchin, our, our, SRTA, our Tourism Association, has in their possession. Local enhanced roadside assessment testing, the drivers are still can take their assessment at Coast Capital, and assessments locations will remain operational until an evaluation of the effectiveness is completed. So we're not sure if this assessment for older people and their driver's license will remain in Sook, but for the time being, they can still do their assessments here in town, which is good news. 911 funding, the provincial download, the last correspondence that we had on this file was in October of this year. Cowichin, North Cowichin has sort of been leading the charge on behalf of southern communities that are affected by this download, and there was a meeting with the Assistant Deputy Minister Wayne Rideout. We have not been successful for any additional resources from Treasury Board at this point to fund this download that will be about $300,000 to the District of Sook, but there is some hope that they're going to find some temporary funding and push this back so it's not a hit to us in 2022, but that's not written stone quite yet. Moratorium on Vancouver Island wolf hunting and trapping. AVIC has done some resolutions on this. Oak Bay just missed the deadline for a resolution to UBCM, but UBCM executives are going to determine whether they push this forward to the province or not. And Mayor Tate is, continues to work with the Takeya Legacy and Wall Pacific Group, and they're doing a documentary, and I did see a bunch of video equipment in the mayor's office a couple of weeks ago, so I'm really looking forward to seeing that. And that's the end of our advocacy issues.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. It's just a correction that the, for the UBCM resolution, it didn't get debated, it didn't hit the cut. It's, Oak Bay submitted it by the deadline, but it, at the UBCM AGM, we ran out of time, so it was cut off. So it will go to the executive, it'll likely be probably returned because there's no existing policy. And just for council's benefit, I did receive the request regarding the rodenticides, the province has formed a working group, so when our CEO referenced that, it just came in today, and I accepted and agreed to participate on the temporary working group. So I don't have a date for that yet, but it'll likely kick off soon.
Is that pesticides as well?
Yes, so it came from the Krista Zacharias Homer, and I'm just looking at it here, integrated press management, collaborate new kinds of materials, blah, blah, blah. So it's on regarding the ban, purchase sale of anticoagulant rodenticides. So we'll get more, it's new, I don't know, I don't have the rest. And the working group with the Chief Justice kicks off tomorrow. And I believe the funding for the wastewater was not successful through ISIP, our MLA found a different funding stream. So the feds get no credit at all on doing anything for that project.
Thank you, I, I believe you're correct. The, the application was through ISIP.
Yeah, the application was, but then I think when our MLA found out that it was not going to receive funding, he found a different way to fund it. Yeah, so the feds get no credit. Just don't think they deserve any because that was a good project. They didn't fund other ones too, but I'll stop talking about that. Okay, so public input, before we do anything. So just to throw everyone on the spot here, we are in committee of the whole, so it's meant to be more in meant to be more informal, so that's where there isn't the set time at the start of the meeting. It is meant to flow, usually we just have a couple of items, but we're trying to catch up a bit here, which is why there's more. But there's still the two-minute sort of opportunity, and it would be for this item specifically. So if you would like to comment on Mr. McKinnis's presentation, this would be the time to do so. And as always, we just ask that you join us at the microphone, please give us your name, just the municipality or local government where you reside, and just your comments on the presentation that he just heard. And then I'll do the same thing for the other items that follow on the agenda. So please come forward.
Okay, you know what I'm here about.
Well, you still need to introduce yourself though.
William Wallace and I live in Sook on Horn Road. I'm here to talk about John Phillips Memorial Park in response to his statements. You're asking for design work to be done on a building that is, I think it's still intended to go in John Phillips Memorial Park, if I'm correct, and in the location, which I objected to right from the very start, which is in the Pond Meadows area. And before we start designing a building, shouldn't we ask whether it's applicable to put that building in that area? In the 2006, Your Honor, you reference, it has a conceptual drawing of that park, and in there, it identifies that region as a flood potential area. And it has a road going, Otter Point Road being, following the path which is down in the park now. So shouldn't we be asking, first of all, whether it's suitable to even put a building in that area before we ask whether, what kind of design we want? And I think it wouldn't cost $40,000 to do a design specification, which I asked a week ago whether there was anything done. I think you can detail what a building should offer without going to the design work of an architect coming up with a master plan. So that's really all I wanted to say in regard to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace, and I think council agreed with that, so that's next report on the item. Other speakers this evening on the strategic priorities update?
Thank you, I'm Susan Belford, and I'm always confused about technological things. I didn't intend to speak, but I was just a little bit concerned about the consider climate action and the 7% solution and the strategic climate adaptation. I was concerned, I'm concerned that there's no funding planned for that latter piece, the climate adaptation framework, because I think that's going to be pretty key for us over the next few years. And I was also just wondering about the use of language, consider climate action, social mobility. My notes are bad, but I just, I worry about terms like "consider" because to me, they're weasel words. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Just to confirm, and I'll have Mr. McKinnis clarify this, I believe that we have already committed in principle funding for the climate action objectives. And then I think where it says "consider" is that council always has to approach everything with an open mind, so we could be challenged if the language was different, but I'll, Mr. McKinnis reported out, so I'll let him answer that.
Thank you, worship. It was purely a matter of timing on the "consider." This report went to council in July, the same meeting that the recommendations from the committee came forward. So that's why I put "consider," because I didn't want to lose the opportunity to have those on this strategic priorities chart. But council is actually going to see the report after my report in July, so it was just a matter of timing.
Any other speakers on this particular item? Okay, so we'll move on. So yes, I'm now turning back to council, so just hold your horses, you're not a member of the public. We just wanted to make sure that I covered everyone off. Okay, so there is a report, you have a question, go ahead, please, Councilman Bateman.
Well, yeah, first, I just wanted to thank Mr. McKinnis. There was a time not so long ago in the District of Sook where we didn't see this kind of micro granular detailed pathway, right? And I mean, you two were on council back in the day, and this is new, and thank you, sir. So I just had one question around the Explore Public Plaza partnership with Evergreen Shopping Mall. You didn't mention the actual public plaza there. Now, I understand a request for proposals went out for a design drawing of that, is that correct? Or is that in the future? And that will be based very specifically on the recommendations from the LADE report?
Yes, okay. So we're hearing from the nonmicrophone speaker that it was awarded and StanTech has achieved that win, and based on the Shret.
Yeah, and the reason that these two things are connected is because both the Shret and the Town Center Plan connectivity through the shopping center to LADE was a big part of the access.
Other questions, Councilor St. Pierre?
This is a question actually for your worship potentially. Given the fierce advocacy around Little River Crossing, is there any interest in the suggestions by Mr. Peter Stokoe in correspondence with council in terms of actually advancing on the pedestrian portions of the multi-use trail? Or at least making plans to do so while waiting for further funding for the full project to be funded? Is there any thought to that?
Well, the reason why I took it to our MLA is because, you know, when you have a project that is phased, and we've been successful with the other phases and did very well, to then actually be, okay, we're now at the final phase, the most critical one, and the funding bodies are like, yeah, not funding it. It just makes me angry, like you knew that we were building up phase one, phase two, and now here's the last one. So I reached out to our MLA because I need help advocating for this. You know, and I get that, I always, oh, the project's oversubscribed, it's oversubscribed, and I get that, but I need a different approach. So like, what's not working here when you fully fund these other pieces and then build up all this momentum only to have the most critical piece? And now we're like, seriously? So I think this is where staff meanwhile are also finding another way to fund it through the budget. And then I think it depends then on council then, do we then look for a different alternate? I think the challenge is the terrain, and we need to have something that's universally accessible, because right now it isn't. So even if we did Plan B instead of Plan A, it still only works well for able-bodied users. So that leaves out all the parents pushing, who are walking with their kids to school that are maybe pushing a stroller, accessibility issues, and it's steep. So to encourage little kids to ride a bike on a very steep hill that you kind of slide down isn't a safe access to a school. So I think more will come on that through our budget, and meanwhile, I'm just hoping to get a different win out of this. Other questions? Comment? Well, questions, because we don't have a motion. And then it was Pacific Wild and a documentary, so yeah, that was the film crew that was in. It was more, far more than a iPhone that showed up that day. It made me actually quite nervous, but we'll see what happens, it'll be in November. Okay, so we have a recommendation here, and that is that the Committee of the Whole recommend council receive the strategic priorities chart update for Q3 2021 for information. Moved by Councilor Logans, speaking to it.
Such a fantastic job that you do, Mr. McKinnis, and I'm really honored to have you. I know we say it all the time, but it has to be said again, it is amazing how well you structured this organization so that staff can work effectively and so that we get some really good detailed information. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments? And I'll just share, it was important for this council that we invest in a strategic plan, that it means relevant, that we adapt it with whatever comes our way while we're serving in office, because I didn't predict a pandemic when we all got elected and what that would do to all the work we're doing. So we had to adapt accordingly. And then I think also as we position ourselves and receive grants, then we have to think about the impact that has on the organization. So we didn't want a strategic plan that's on the wall or on a shelf, and then we can kind of forget about it, whereas now it's actually in front of us, and then it informs all the work we're doing. So again, thank you for the work and to all the staff that are doing all the bits and pieces behind the scenes. Okay, I'm going to call the question on the motion, all in favor, please. That's unanimous, thank you. So we're moving along to 7.4, July to September 2021 Quarterly Update.
Thank you. I don't have a formal presentation on this one, because I have a PowerPoint for the service level review report next. So just wanted to briefly highlight just a couple points here is just to caution council or the community for getting too excited over the large building permit revenue this year, as there are a couple large significant projects occurring in 2021 that that revenue has now been realized. So I'll be working closely with Mr. Palo to determine any increases to building permit revenue for future years. So just wanted to highlight that, as well as highlight that thankfully there was no need for a tax sale in 2021, as last year's tax sale was deferred, so potentially there was property owners who could have had four years of outstanding taxes. So I'm pleased to report that there was no need to have a tax sale this year. From the expenses side, as, you know, the sign of a good budget means, you know, you're spending in accordance with the budget. And so for the district, that's what we're seeing this year. I think as we do future quarterly reporting, it'll be another comparison to measure back against prior year quarters and just another information source with this being our first year doing this. We're just kind of providing the framework and providing some high-level information to council and the community as a whole on where spending is occurring. And I think what people will start to see now after they start paying more attention is a lot of expenses, et cetera, occur in the fourth quarter, because they're just once-a-year expenses, potentially year-end accruals for payables and things like that happen. So there's a lot of journal entries that happen with the whole year-end audit process. So additional information will be provided to council early in next year as the financial audit is progressing along. As it stands now, KPMG is here to start the interim audit next Monday or next Tuesday and Wednesday. We'll get carried on to that. And another thing to highlight, again, is just the capital projects are on track as indicated in the report. There's been some commentary just for the current status of these projects, as most of them are operations. Mr. Carter is here, if you want some further details, he can speak at length at any of these projects. And just wanted to end with a highlight on all, as other staff and council have stated, on all the grants that the district has received, you know, we've received over $9 million of grant funding between 2020 and 2021 here. And for a growing municipality like this, that's just huge. It's huge for me, I got goosebumps right now just thinking about it, because these are huge massive projects that the district is able to get happening in the community. Otter Point, perfect example. It was scheduled for, I believe, 2023 or 2024, and we were going to try and find funding for this. So, you know, basically 100% grant opportunity came up, and well, I appreciate the disruption in the community, as we're all driving in it right now, at the end it's going to be well worth it, and it saved taxpayers $2 million of a different funding source. Because even in theory, outside of gas tax, if we were going to use a different reserve fund that was funded by property taxes, it's just delaying the inevitable there. So I just want to highlight the, well, as Mr. McKinnis said, these grants are a lot of work to apply, and then also a lot of work to do all the reporting involved in it. It's time well spent, and it's, you know, for the long-term sustainability of this community, it's critical for us to get these grants. And just appreciation for council for supporting the funding needed to apply for these grants, to do the design work needed, to have the designs available to submit with these grants, because that's been the game changer for us, is when we can show that we have a shelf-ready project, we definitely can jump up a few rungs of the ladder when they're trying to find funding sources. So I'll just leave that there, knowing that there's more to talk about with the service level review, but as usual, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. And I'll just add for the grants that historically in the past, they were always divided up like in a 30-30-30. The federal government does 30, you know, they do a third, third, third. But for local government to raise the third is considerable, and often we can't do that, and sometimes so things don't get funded, or we have to try to borrow to do that, to come up with the third, and we can't use gas tax to stack against other grants, so then we're just stuck. So the advocacy has been, feds, you need to fund more of this, and that's been the ask. So at least they've responded, and so that's where, when we're banging the drum, that you need to fund the full share. When they throw it open, we have to apply and take the money. So I get that it's inconvenient, but to leave $2 million on the table and walk away from it when we're saying we need 100% funding in our community doesn't work. So it's a good time, I'm reaching out to our MP now that the federal election is over, so we can continue holding that advocacy firm and get more funding, not only in grants, but also stable, permanent, predictable funding. It was the whole intent of local government financial resilience, we're not cap in hand all the time. It's frustrating. Questions for Ms. Gray, though? Okay, so I'll invite members of the public, since we're in committee of the whole, same thing, if you just have any comments or questions you would like to make on 7.4, July/September 2021 Quarterly Update. If you see that, you'll also see the variants reported out, where we're on track and so forth. So it's all here in the report, and then just where we're at with the capital projects, and you'll see they've also been outlined into which quarter, quarter three we're in right now, and entering into quarter four.
Just a procedural question. Are these PowerPoint presentations available on your website?
The PowerPoint presentations available on the website?
They are not currently, but they are available through the web stream. The whole meeting that has been presented is available through the YouTube channel.
So if you go onto the web stream, which is about 24 hours later is when it all gets finalized and put on, then you'll see the PowerPoint presentations there, but in terms of Ms. Gray's report here, it's all online in the Civic Info Portal. So both the documents that Mr. McKinnis referenced, as well as the ones in this report, the agenda's all there. You'll be able to see all of this information there at any time. It's in the agenda itself. Okay, so moving on then to members of council, the recommendation here is that the Committee of the Whole recommends council receive the quarterly update report for information. Moved by Councilor St. Pierre. Any comments, Councilor St. Pierre? Anything from anyone else? Okay, a lot of thank-yous out there, of course, so I'll call the question, all those in favor, please. That's unanimous, thank you. So that brings us to our 7.5 Budget 2022 Service Level Review. And I will ask at this time for a short recess. I think those of us who did not need to step out need to. So we'll be back in five, please.
Overall with the district initiatives, it provides a more fulsome picture of of what we're going to try and accomplish over these next few years here. And I just, again, just touching on that one, the final point is just the district's working to refine its publication participation process and includes a rat will include a randomized mail out for budget consultation later in 2022 to help support statistically relevant data being collected. It's important to note that the data, while the data collected does provide valuable insights to help identify priorities and enhance the development of district services, response rates are not statistically significant. Okay, so how I'm structuring, proposing structuring the conversation is to take all these pieces is to talk each department specifically. I wanted to highlight, just to brief highlight on the services they provide, some of the feedback that we'd heard through all these various engagements, and then tie them into the budget asked for that specific department. And then hopefully looking for a pause after each department and have council have a more fulsome conversation, time permitting, on any of the items included for that specific department. Because feedback from prior years was preventing all of this at one time and then trying to go back after the final presentation was over was potentially a bit cumbersome. So this is the model we're going to go through this year is just have each departments individually, and then we can pause at each department and staff and directors are here if council has any further questions on any items being requested. And so I just wanted to highlight as before we get to into the weeds here is rounding up approximately $100,000 is equivalent to 1% property tax increase. And if all department recommendations were supported in this report in front of you, there will be a double-digit property tax increase. I just want to throw that out there just to be super realistic. Like, there's a lot of, a lot of big dollar asks in the community, and we're still playing a bit of catch-up from prior years and not having adequate funding. So there are savings to tap into now when we actually have staff here and can operationalize some of these projects. So I just want to highlight that out there that, well, on the surface, these are all good and very meaningful and much-needed projects in the community. Just realistically, I'm always cognizant of how much the community can actually afford, and so that will dictate potentially the timeline. But ultimately, it's up to council's determination decision to help staff prioritize which projects will be included. And always with the lens of for 2022, we're going to be looking a lot more into the social procurement, low-carbon resilience, and co-benefits pieces to ensure that we're doing a better job with at least identifying what some of those co-benefits may be for some of our larger procurements that we're doing, so the community and council can be informed of that. So I'll just get right into it. For council, obviously, council's main goal is to foster the economic, social, and environmental wellbeing of its community. Some of the feedback we heard was appreciation for pop-up activities, increased communication, and opportunities for the public to provide feedback, general awareness of the programs in both the transportation on Parks and Trails master plan, and the fact there's an acknowledgement that these will take significant funding to implement these projects. So specifically for council's section of the budget, the budget asks included, as you already heard earlier this evening, was $30,000 being requested from Sook Family Resource Services Agreement. There's been a $5,000 request from School District 62 for their Healthy Schools Initiative. Sook Region Historical Society is requesting a $5.4,000 increase in funding due to increased costs directly related to COVID. And I just wanted to, again, highlight, as we've talked about earlier, it's a bit unknown with the 911 cost. Right now, potentially, the budget for 2022 would be an $80,000 district contribution required if everything stands as is. So that's just kind of in the back pocket waiting for further information on that. So I, for council one, I will just pause there if there's any questions or council wants a bit more information on any of the, obviously, we've already talked about Sook Family Resource, but on the Healthy Schools or Sook Region Historical Society asks, happy to provide more information if I have it.
Counselor St. Pierre?
For the Sook Regional Historical Society, given that this is an increase due to COVID, is this a one-time ask? And can we use COVID relief funding for that?
It is a one-time ask. Their, their ask was stating that they would just need this bump lift in funding for 2022, and then their increase, or their service agreement expires at the end of '22, so that would be one of the agreements coming before council for consideration of expansion going forward. And potentially, COVID funding could be, I'm not sure. Because there's specific rules for the COVID reserve on byline. I don't know that what they're asking for would be applicable off the top of my head.
So why ask?
Any other comments from the questions? Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, through, in terms of the Healthy Schools Initiative, $5,000, that's Cindy Andrew at School District 62. She is developing what she calls a regional multi-sectoral table at which municipalities within the SD 62 area are invited. The idea is to create an inventory of available spaces for use in particular by child and youth-serving organizations. And of course, we signed an MOU with School District 62 in the summer. And one of its key comments here is School District 62 and the district have many shared interests in delivering their mandates, which include shared-use facilities, sports, and So logically, opening up school facilities to the public is potentially a way to expand our recreational facilities.
Yeah, and they've started that a bit through sea park in the programming, but a lot of sea parks programs were delayed because the schools weren't ready to, so like Taekwondo, for example, was delayed a month because the school couldn't access and open yet, meeting space, other types of things. So I think it's, we're still at the start of trying to get there.
Keep going, Ms. Green.
Okay, so I guess the ask then would be if council supports those initiatives, just to do a resolution to, this is some recommended wording.
Okay, so I don't recommend funding the ECOM, so we'll still push back on that one.
Yeah, for sure, sorry.
And just for the benefit of the members of the public that are here and watching, we saw, we have a long-term RCMP agreement that spells out costs, responsibilities, all those sorts of things. So my challenge with this is now someone decided, you know, midway through this agreement, that all local governments should pay for this piece, but only these local governments, not all the local governments in BC, just how about some on the South Island? And then someone said, okay, that sounds great, we'll phase it in. And I'm like, well, what does that cost? Well, we'll get back to you. Go talk to so-and-so, you know, I say, I don't like to do this, so send me on this chicken little hunt, only to find out they had the information whole long several months later. And yeah, it would grow to $300,000, and we'll phase it in accordingly. And why now in the middle of agreement when all has been said and done? So our push has been when that agreement expires, that would be the appropriate time to start discussing this, not in the middle of it all. So that's where we're at, and why just some and not all? Why not, if you're going to do this, make it all local governments? Some already pay it, and particularly those that have their own police force. We don't, we're our CMP, so why some and not all? Why, you know, and it varies on the calculations, but that's where we're pushing back on this. And again, no correspondence. So now we're dealing with our budget, we don't have room for it, so I don't know. It'll be an interesting point to see, but we're on that. But I think for now, it's, for those additional items that came through, so those were the added ask, so how does that weave into this recommendation? So we're looking then that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct staff to include a service level increase in the 2022 budget for the council, for the council department by including those third-party requests from Sook Family Resource Center, School District, and then the Sook Historical Society.
Correct. I mean, I guess, I believe you've already made, council's already made the resolution about Sook Family Resource, so that one's been covered. But if council is supportive of the Healthy Schools and Sook Region Historical Society funding increases, that's all, separate, just looking for some direction from council if they're supportive of those initiatives.
So make a motion, I'll just put it out, we'll make that motion then? Okay, we have a question first, and then we'll go to the motion, so.
Well, first of all, what is a council department?
I don't know, I'm just reading what's on the screen.
It's just in the five-year financial plan, you, council has their own separate page on there, so administration.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so that's all.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And also, I was just curious, you've mentioned in the report, the Vancouver Island Film Commission need to suicide prevention, is that, are they coming up later, or is this part of that section?
That would, in theory, be part of that section if it's something that council would like staff to consider. I just, based on the value of their previous funding sources, it wasn't something that had been actively pursued by staff.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out for those two, and the intermunicipal advisory committee on disability issues, we had recommended, I believe, at our community grant hearing that they become line items, not service agreements, but simple line items to save these organizations would automatically receive community grant funding year-to-year from the district and all other municipalities in the region. So just, I'm sure VI Film Commission can handle the work, but these other groups are, you know, stressed, and we've been supporting them long-term. If, that's how I remember it, anyway.
Yeah, no, I remember it that way as well, I just didn't see that in here. I was just looking at the previous slide that had those two additional ones. So those other grants will fall elsewhere then.
For the VI Need to Soci, Need to, and there is not a specific request, this would be the time if council would like staff to create items for those items. I'm not recommend, staff hasn't recommended doing a formal service agreement with those because there's a lot more reporting and et cetera required for those. If council's supportive of doing a line item, this would be the time I would request council indicate that.
Okay, so those, I see what you mean, okay, I'm just trying to follow the, follow the bouncing ball. I mean, just to have, to entertain a grant each year for $200 is a lot of time on everyone's part for $200. So it just needs to be in somewhere. Okay, so there's a motion then, ugh, okay.
I only motioned what was on the screen.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, so I, I'll read it out again when it comes back. Okay, so that the committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to include a service level increase in the 2222 budget for the admin, for the council. It just doesn't line up with what I, what I'm reading. For the council department by including third-party funding requests for the Healthy Schools Initiative, Sook Region Historical Society Need to Suicide Line, and the Intermunicipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues. So that, that one is $200, and Need to is $3,500, or the.
No, that was a COVID special.
Yeah, the system, the system here isn't working for me, I'm just saying, this isn't working, trying to pull this all together here. Okay, $3,500, okay, so, well, yeah, I don't have the dollar amount, so that's where it's like, how do I, how do we increase this when we don't have the amount? But now I have to try to find it.
Yes, Counselor Bateman?
Well, yeah, isn't everything we're putting into this budget is going to show up in the, in the first version, and then we can cut and chop and.
Okay.
So whatever goes in here tonight is.
The amount is so bizarre, it doesn't really, let's go, what's the ask? Put it in, and then have a discussion.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to get the motion ready on the floor, but then, like, I was content by just having the third-party requests in here, but then if we actually need, as I hear from staff, to put it in now, then we need the amounts in here now, but I have to pull it from, it's kind of tedious.
Three-year worship, if it's, if it's just a matter of you want the various VI Film Commission, Need to Society, Suicide Prevention, Intermunicipal Advisory Committee, if you want those few requests just included as a line item, that's all the direction I would need if you just want those to be included as a line item.
Yeah, those, and then the other ones from the Healthy Schools and the Sook Region Historical Society, because we have a motion from Sook Family Resource Center already. So that's where those all have to be in here then? Like, we are going to be here a long time if this is, if this is how we have to approach this. Just saying. Like, do you need that much minutia in there, like, for each one? Can it not just say the third-party requests, period, and then the subsequent one?
That's fine, that's fine for me, that's.
Okay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because it'll always take a long time. So I think then, just take all that out for now, and then let's discuss that. Like, we're looking to increase our departmental piece to allow for funding those third-party requests. Okay, would someone like to move that? We're increasing to fund that, okay? Got it? Moved by Counselor Bateman. Speaking to it, anything? No? Comments, anyone?
Counselor Betts?
Yeah, I really don't like this method. I mean, basically, we're saying the first cut is that we're okay with this, and I'm not. But then again, I hear that later on, we will cut again, so I'm not sure what we're doing here.
Counselor McMath, someone tell me out here.
Narrow down, three-year worship, we need to narrow down, there's a lot of asks here.
I understand.
And so I just need direction from council if there's any other ask that we need to consider, or if there's any other, if out of these asks, if there's any of these items that council does not want staff to consider in the first draft of the budget.
Wow.
As I stated, all these asks are going to be a double-digit property tax increase, so I think it was just looking for guidance and direction from council on which, is there some, some initial prioritization of these asks? And then staff can take that away and work that into the first draft of the budget. In a perfect world, these would all be possible, but unfortunately, the most likely will not be.
I guess that's my concern, is that I hear, that's sort of what I'd like to know, if everything that's in this thing is a double-digit ask, then somewhere along the line, we have to take a really good, hard look at some of these things, even if it's $2,000 here and $1,000 there. And, you know, just to say, okay, we'll put it in, and then, and then we chop it out, so we're doing the same thing again. But I also see the problem, if we start doing this now, we'd have to look at each one of these items, discuss it, vote on it, we'll be here till.
Two in the morning.
Yeah, well, I won't be, you might be, but, so I'm just, I'm trying to find a way through this that, easy, I appreciate what staff's doing, and, you know, they've just been excellent in the past. I'm just trying to think how to get through this, and I'm sort of, I'm really not happy just saying, yeah, just put it all in and we'll sort it out later, you know, sort of.
I don't know, because I don't know what the other pieces are.
I don't know either.
So I don't want, like, until I see everything, how do we say no to $2,200 when later on, the question will be, can you actually progress this project in this year? And it could be one thing that'll come out that'll bring the whole thing down, but I don't know that. So I find this to be a bit.
Can we just make the process that we include all of the asks in the draft budget?
Yeah.
And then when we reconvene, we, there's a dollar amount associated and a percentage, excuse me, a percentage associated with it, and then we can go through, triage, prioritize, and trim as we see, because it's asking, do you want a decrease, do you want an increase? It's impossible to, to choose that in this.
Yeah.
In this way.
Agreed. So for this one, it's, it's all on the screen there.
Do we have one more minute?
Not that I can read any of it.
We're not doing ECOM, right?
No. Definitely don't have money for that.
Is that it? I don't make any better.
Yeah. Okay, so this motion is live, okay?
I guess my other motion I made is just getting.
Well, I, we were in the process of getting clarity when I didn't hear your motion, so then we crafted one.
Well, I withdrawed the motion.
I don't even know what it was, because we were getting questions.
That first screen that we had up there, they had three items, and I made that motion, and then we discussed the motion, and then it disappeared. You know, I withdrawed the motion, I just that.
I didn't even capture that, because we were, I was in, I read out one, and I didn't even catch that, so I'm sorry, I missed that you had made that emotion entirely.
I'm not terribly offended, let me tell you.
Okay, all right, so, but this is here, this is what we're, this is what's been moved, and this is where we're at. Okay, so any discussion on this? I'll call a question then, all is in favor? Any opposed? Or unanimous, or?
I know, I understand, yeah, we'll vote for it.
It's, okay, we're moving on, oh my goodness, okay, next, please.
All right, so the next department we're talking about is the Administration Department, and this encompasses the CAO, HR, Communications, Community Economic Development, and Climate Action. Feedback that we received from the citizen budget was 41% of respondents feel that we should be keeping the budget the same in this department. Administration building is to become more energy efficient, appreciation for increased communications, and concerns about staff workload we're seeing in some of the comments. So specifically for these departments, the three asks that are kind of over and above smaller dollar increases in these various items in the budget would be $233,000 for various climate action initiatives, which have been detailed in the report. There is $35,000 being requested from Community Economic Development for an employment land strategy and promotional materials for business attraction, and the Communications Department is requesting an additional $30,000 for enhanced signage for parks and trails recommended in the Trent, Parks and Trails master plans. So for the Climate Action Initiative, there, as Mr. McKenna stated earlier, there was a, a meeting, and their initial ask of $101,000 has gone up to $233,000. There's a few different smaller funding initiatives, as well as the most significant increase would be a new dedicated full-time climate coordinator position with an estimated salary and benefits of approximately $87,000. So just looking, I guess, for council's thoughts or support. This staff member here is not part of the non-market change staff recommendations that council, or that staff had made. This is a specific request from the Climate Action Committee.
Okay, Counselor Betts?
I'm really not happy with $233,000 climate action initiatives. We had it come before us the other day for debate that was, was $101,000 or something like that?
$105.
$105, yeah, this, I don't have those near figures in front of me, and all of a sudden, it's bloomed up to 233 with no further discussion? So not happy with that at all.
101.
101 or 105, whatever it is, I'm okay with, but not that.
Okay, questions, comments?
No, I, I would like to give some context, if that's possible.
Well, are we good?
Just hold up, just.
Okay, just wait, point of order been called, so I need to reply. Go ahead.
So we're going to debate this now, when we've already debated it last, last week, and it was 101, 105,000, now we're doing it again?
No, I was getting, Counselor Bateman wanted to provide some context, so I thought he should be able, afforded the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, so I think it's, you know, last, last week, I noted that the Climate Action Committee had struck a working group of, of the chair and the vice chair, and so Bernie Klass and Anna Russell and Elizabeth Lang, and they had developed a, an update on the recommendation, and that, and I noted that I was looking forward to seeing it at the meeting two days later from our council meeting, and indeed, this is what has emerged. You're seeing here a, a single paragraph, very tightly kerned, and without any of the, the documentation that the Climate Action Committee generated, and that's, that's unfortunate, because I would now need to take the next 20 minutes plus to pitch this thing, and I, I don't think that's appropriate, given the hour, or the fact that what we need here is, is a proper explanation of this, this new request. It is, so I'd like to, I don't know if I need a motion here, but I, the, the thought would be that this revised budget recommendation be built into the first draft of the 2022 budget to be presented on November 8th, and that full documentation about the recommendation be forwarded from the CAC for inclusion in that agenda, so all of us can read it, and you can save my song and dance, and it can join the rest of the double-digit recommendations, and we can then begin to seriously start cutting it back. So that would be my, my thought to save us time tonight.
Okay, so restate the motion then.
Okay, I move that the CAC's revised budget recommendation be built into the first draft of the 2022 budget to be presented on November 8th. And part two, that full documentation about the recommendation be forwarded from the Climate Action Committee for inclusion in the November 8th agenda.
All right, I did not get it, or, one second.
All right.
Wait on the screen for a second. Okay, that full documentation about the recommendation be forwarded from the Climate
Action Committee for inclusion, from the CAC, for inclusion in the November 8th agenda.
Okay, so that's been moved by Counselor Bateman, so that is now on the floor. But I think there's still the other pieces of that ask that are not in Counselor Bateman's motion, so we're going to need to deal with two here. Okay, so any further comments, Counselor Bateman, on this?
Well, you know, I, I would like to save them for November 8th, ideally.
Okay, well, that's up to you.
If there are questions, I'm prepared to answer them tonight.
Okay, so I have one question, so in the, I'm looking at right now the Budget Deliberations Report that came to our special meeting on October the 4th. Did the staff report change from then to now? And the reason why is because it won't load for me on our, on the app for tonight. All the other reports do, but this particular one won't load at all. I'm just getting error messages, so I had to go to the other report. So did it change? Is that information in the new report, and I'm just not seeing it?
It, it changed significantly. There was a meeting on Thursday evening last week, the, our agenda was already prepared.
Okay.
The special meeting for the Climate Action Committee was specifically a 45-minute meeting on the OCP, but the agenda was changed before the meeting started, and this is the result of that meeting. So the timing of this is horrible, my apologies for that, and perhaps we should have just kept the $101,000, but as I did mention to council at our meeting last Monday, the timing was going to be an issue, especially with some of the committee work that we have going this year. So certainly open to any direction that council would like to give on bringing forward information between now and ultimately when the five-year financial bylaws adopt before the end of December.
Okay, well, I think it's just getting that, that other information that we don't have. Obviously, and that's the intent of Counselor Bateman's motion. Okay, Counselor McMath?
I was expecting to have a list of the items requested, given fuller context, but then also prioritized, because at our previous meeting, there was no priority given to any items on the list. So it's, it's difficult to give direction when we don't know, when we're leaning to the group for guidance as well, and they're looking for our support. and they're looking for our support. It's hard if we're going to, because there's no way we're going with a double digit. So how do we provide, how do we support the group the best to communicate, or excuse me, to benefit the community the most when we don't know which pieces we should be supporting over others?
Okay, good question. And interestingly, the C A C will be meeting on two, is it next Tuesday? Two Tuesdays, next Tuesday. So that, I will bring that up. Our Vice Chair is in the room with us tonight. She hears you. And yeah, this, we're, there's a need to be realistic. I think this, this request, when you factor out the Climate Action Coordinator at eighty-seven thousand dollars, it comes back in at a hundred and forty-five thousand. And each of the items, anyway, see, I'm beginning to explain. And that's why I'd like to save it for, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor St. Pierre?
I think like all of us, I'm just struggling with the process that we're using here.
Yeah.
I would suggest that what staff needs here is direction in terms of maybe having more details like what Counselor Bateman is suggesting we need for this particular item. And so as opposed to debating the merits of anything unless it's really very obvious to us that, you know, the will of council seems to be to take that particular item of the budget, I suggest we not spend too much time deliberating at this point in time and simply ask for more details and potentially mostly keep everything included unless we obviously just look at something and go, no way, we can actually strike this one.
Go ahead, Counselor Loggins.
Thank you. I tend to agree. I feel it, it could actually be an interesting practice for us to show the community. This is what happens when we get everything we want. So it gives us the, yes, it's a huge ask, ten percent, or double-digit percentage. And it says, this is why we have to say no, because, and it will make our no's a lot more understandable when people see the vast list of, of items we have to deal with. If we start picking and choosing now, it might be a lot harder to justify going through that list at a later, oh geez, at a later point. My scarf is fluffing on me. So I tend to agree with Counselor St. Pierre that it could be a good exercise to sort of say yes to things if there are major items that were all like absolutely not, this is ridiculous, we can take them out. Although I don't believe that will be the case because staff did such a good job of aligning this with our strategic priorities. So now it's just a matter of narrowing that down at, at a later date once we see all the numbers.
Okay, so that still leaves me stuck with what to do with this motion here. We do have one that's live on the floor. So what you're saying is just, proceed, put, put everything in and we'll see where we'll end up. Okay.
But also add in anything now that you might have thought of, perhaps. I don't know. Counselor Bateman has added, well, not added, but you've added information to, to a few items. So if there is anyone else who has items you want to add, probably now is a good time to do it. And then we can say, this is the big.
Yeah, it's just the items he raised were in the staff report. It's just linking, because now I'm, my other device died. I didn't have a charger. So I needed to bring something else up. So I've pulled this straight from our website. It's just they don't, where I'm struggling, it, it just doesn't line up easily like some of the other pieces. There's no. Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to call Counselor Betts and then.
Yeah, I, I really object. I, I just, this just drives me nuts that, you know, there, there's changes here that were something we just passed two, not even two weeks ago. And it's, it's all changed. Even the incentive for the heat pumps, which we all agreed was okay for three hundred and fifty. I think there was thirty. I can't remember because I don't have it in front of me. And, and all these other things. And now we just lump it in. Okay, we'll have a look at it later. It's a hell of a way to do business. I don't agree with that at all.
And you are correct. So that's where, you know, I, I hear you there. The, the rebate did change from what we had approved. So that's where it is confusing.
One of the things with the Climate Action Committee recommendations, again, the hundred and one thousand dollars was just our attempt to cost up the seven percent solution. So that was the only direction that I was given by council at that point. This is a more holistic budget request from the committee.
Okay. Did someone else wanted to say something or no? Okay, so I'll call the question then. We have the motion here. It's in the report. It's actually two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Right.
Just saying. And for Climate Action Initiatives.
Excuse me, Your Worship. I think the first part that's on your screen there, the Counselor Bateman's motion, is live and hasn't been voted on yet.
Okay, so that's the one that we're looking at. Okay. All right, so thank you for that. All right, so I'll call the question. All those in favor, please? Opposed? Counselor Betts is opposed. And so then the next part of that was the Community Act Dev, thirty-five thousand for Employment Land Strategy and promotional business materials for business attraction and the communications piece for thirty thousand for enhanced signage for parks and trails. It would. So the other pieces, because Counselor Bateman's motion didn't include the other two pieces for the C E D and the parks and trails here. So in the staff report, the thirty thousand is for continued communications that include enhanced signage for parks and trails, utility wrapping programs, zoning bylaw amendments, engagement, ongoing website and online enhancements. And that's under the departmental requests of the staff report. Okay, so motion? Go ahead, Counselor St. Pierre.
Moving counsel direct staff include the thirty-five thousand for employment land strategy and the thirty thousand for enhanced signage for parks and trails to the draft budget.
Okay, so that's moved. Any, anything else? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, please? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. This is kind of where I get to where I'm like, okay, well, let's just move the block.
I'll move the block. And, and debate if you want to add anything in.
So Counselor Loggins, like, it, you know, like what we're, what Counselor Loggins is doing is she's moving the block. And by doing that, it means we're putting in all of the budget requests from each department into the budget. So then we can see where it all adds up. So it's basically, you know, the staff report provides very good justification on all these items. It's just we don't know in the end what it's going to cost us. So to sit here and start pulling out two hundred dollars, like, like I said, we'll be here till two in the morning. Okay, so the motion is that all, Counselor Loggins is moving all departmental requests be incorporated into the budget.
Into the draft budget.
Into the draft budget. That the committee of the whole recommends that as the preamble that I'm trying to find here because it's not on the screen. But so I think just in that, once that motion is up, that the committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to include a service, service level increases for all departments. For all departments.
Can I speak to that while there?
Yeah, we'll just get it up.
Well, yeah. I, I am completely understanding of Counselor Betts right now because there are a lot of items, especially in the last one, that I will be advocating to take out. So with that in mind, like, there, there will be things in here that, that I'll want to take out. And I know that the counselors around the table have the same point of view, that, that there are things that need to be cut. So I do want to make sure that everyone in the community understands that we're doing this in order to get a high-level view of what everything looks like. And once we have the numbers, we'll be, it will be a lot easier for us to, to go through and make sense of where those cuts need to be made. There, I don't think there is a person in this room who wants to see a tax increase that high or even near double digits. We have, we've worked really hard on our budgets in the past to cut them down as much as possible for the public. And I assure you that we'll do that again.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Loggins. Other speakers?
Yeah.
Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, I had a couple of quick questions. The R C M P new officer position is not, there's no amount attached to that position.
Through, Your Worship, there's no request for 2022 for an additional officer.
Oh, okay. Should be filled in late twenty, okay.
Through, sorry, just to clarify, if you were to, there's a current position that is being filled. And so it's anticipated that will be filled, that was approved in 2021's budget. Sorry to clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
It's about an eighteen-year process. So that's where, when it shows up is different, right? Because of the, it's eighteen months and there's a process to clear that. Counselor St. Pierre?
Since we're on this subject of the police officer, I was actually curious because of our presentation from Family Services. There is a strong linkage between community safety and community connection for youth. And there's some really good work done by, by the police in terms of connecting with youth and having programs and outreach. I was curious as to whether or not we could ask our, is it Staff Sergeant Britson? What our detachment was doing in terms of that really important work and whether or not they were coordinating with Family Services and what, what that looked like.
I think the problem is COVID and the fact that none, no outside people can go into the schools. So a lot of the work that they were doing is through the D A R program, which is grade five students, some liaison work in the middle school and high school. But with COVID and the entire, in schools, like, parents can't even peek into a classroom right now. And so I have a tentative, and why I know this is I have a tentative presentation to make at a school in December, but it's still all pending because we're still on a point where there's no outside visitors allowed in.
So if I understand correctly, there's already a good amount of outreach that's happening through the detachment.
Well, I think there's.
But that right now it's not happening because of COVID.
I think there's always ways to improve that, but I think right now a lot of those sorts of things have fallen aside because of COVID.
Okay. Because one of the comments that came out through the community engagement, and, and I tend to agree, is that our community is relatively safe. But prevention and actually working with youth and doing that kind of work might actually be a better use. But I'm, I'm, honestly, I'm a council member, so I'm not actually a police officer to make those kinds of decisions. I'm not, I, I would just like to have some answers in terms of whether or not that's something that's being looked at any further and whether or not we have a role in that.
I can look into that further. I do, I'm in the process of forming a meeting with our staff sergeant. So I'll add it to our discussion item when we have it. But I just know from the outside, there's a lot of restrictions on the schools right now. Okay, so this is our budget. I still, though, would like to have staff do their presentations, though.
Yeah.
So can we just postpone this till after we have, I wouldn't mind just each department head just going through their department, but we just don't need to sit there and decide what we're adding or not. I mean, you've all prepared presentations. I think it would be valuable for us to hear them. So before we move to this, I also want to hear from the public. So why don't we have each department do their presentation? We'll put this on hold for now. Then we need public input and then we can vote on this. Because otherwise, it's, it's too clunky. Like, when can the public chime in on this? After each department? You know, it's just better if everyone does their presentations, I think.
So no departmental presentations were anticipated tonight. The service level document that is in the the agenda is really there to give council and the public sort of a description of the resources that are at the departmental level. The things that you have been talking about over the last little while are the things that we've either heard through public engagement, through requests from third parties, or from department heads on what they would like to see in the 2022 budget. Really, what we were looking for from council was, given all of that and the report from the public engagement, are there areas that we're overspending in and you'd like us to spend less in? And are the areas that you're hearing are really pressure points and that you think more resources need to put in? So we, we've let a fairly simple process get a little bit complicated tonight. And again, my apologies for that. But really, that's what we were looking for tonight. So when we came to budget at the next meeting, we wanted to have a number of drivers. So here's what we heard from the public. Here's what we heard from department heads. Here's what we've heard from council. And that was going to inform the, the next presentation that you see. So we've got direction now. We'll, we'll include everything that came from the public and that came from the departments. What would be beneficial for us to take away and include in the next presentation to council is just, are there areas that you would like to see us spend less in? And are there areas that you'd like us to, to increase our spending?
Okay, thank you for that. It's hard to answer that because when you read the report, like, so the one in front of me is planning and development services, for example. We need solid, like, all this work. I mean, some would argue not to fund this because we don't want more building. But now we're putting the livelihood of many people on, you know, at peril, perhaps. And we also have grants to do certain things. So we need to have the right staffing in place to do the work. And the O C P, the zoning, the policies that all follow. Engineering. We have an infrastructure deficit, so I would like to say we need more in there. And, you know, staff have responded in some ways by finding the additional capacity or the need, there's another position in there to address it. Otherwise, we get grants, we can't do the work, then we have to hand the money back, and that doesn't put us in a good position for the next one. We know that our parks are loved by everyone, so I would say we need more of that, please. Because we know how import, COVID has brought out how important all the parks are to our residents. And then others will argue, we don't want more people using these parks. These are our secret places, so don't promote them because then everyone else will want to access them. So it's kind of a, it depends on who you're talking to. I T, we need to stay on top of that. There's municipalities in B C that have been hit severely with cyber threats that have shut down and completely shut down their operations. So totally need to stand on top of that as well as our financial services, or we won't be able to pay for anything. So that's rather important. Operations, it's the same thing. I mean, if the, you know, if the wastewater water doesn't go down, we have a severe problem. Nobody likes rising toilet water. That's a disaster of epic concerns that keeps me up at night. So that doesn't work either. Community safety, safe community, like, it's tough. Like, I think that's where, when you're looking at all of this and there's good statistical data to support the asks, it gets really tough.
And I agree. We, we've put a lot of time into the document. I don't think we're over-asking in many areas. Really, the, the toughest piece of this work is actually considering, are there areas where we want to spend less? And it's really tough to sort of scale back once a service level has been established. But sometimes priorities change. And, you know, we fall back on, this is the way we've always done things and can't find those efficiencies. So again, th- those are the types of discussions we were looking for tonight. I think, you know, the work that we've done in putting together the document and the asks, we can take away. And we can have this discussion at the next meeting. But to your question, Your Worship, there were, there was no plans for having departmental presentations this evening.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that folks weren't gearing up for that. I mean, and even with legislative services, we cut that back. We have a requirement under law to deliver for freedom of information. All, you know, there's no way of cutting back what we're legislatively required to do. So that's just kind of where I'm at. But I am curious. I wanted to know where the boxes ended up. Like, will we get that presentation where the members of the community had the dollars and they had to put them into the boxes? Sort of hoping for like an unveiling and opening of the boxes. So that's what I was hoping for. So anyway, I'll go just to other counselors and then I'd like to invite any members of the public that would like to comment. So Counselor Betts?
Yeah, there, there was actually some very good stuff when I dig down into, you know, talking to the public because they, they've, you know, you put it in some really nice perspective. Your legislative services, keep the same. Legislative service, keep the same. Bylaw service, keep the same. Financial service and I T, keep the same. Planning and development, three percent increase. That was sixty-seven percent of the people. That was 67% of the people were indicating that. Parks and environment, 3% increase. Engineering, roads and underground services, 3% increase. And the others are, keep the same. That's what the public wants us to spend the money on, and I found that very valuable looking through that. There's a lot of really good information in here. The other thing is, I'm just thinking back to past, are we going to be able to get through this at a normal council meeting? Is there enough time to do it? Or do we have to, I think one year, I can't remember now. We had a meeting in the afternoon, and we went through it with a finer-tooth comb. And I don't know whether that's, I mean, everybody gets meetinged, I understand, but I don't want to give this the bum's rush. Not when we got 11, you know, double-digit increases, then the public expects us to do our due diligence and get on with this. And I applaud staff, they've got a tremendous amount of information here, and, but for us to go through it and make those decisions, I find it really tough, doing what I'm doing at home and everything else, and to do all this in that timeframe without some special... And I, you know, I know people work, it's tough during the day, but it seems last time we had a day meeting or something, like a workshop, and went through it in the public domain. I don't know, I'm just trying to find a way through this, without us bogging down on another evening, when we've got other council business to do. This is important, so I don't know, I throw that out to council.
Okay, Councilor Bateman?
Well, I guess the question, then, would be to staff, what will November 8th look like as an evening meeting? Is it dedicated to the budget exclusively, or? It's a regular council meeting?
No, there are already several items scheduled on that meeting.
So I think what that does is that we will need to call a special council meeting, and I think just to find some polling as to when that can take place, because there's going to be impacts all over. And I appreciate that some of our councilors work, I know what that's like to work, is just finding the time. I mean, well, I know, it's just, well, I'm, you know, I'm not here, there's family responsibilities and childcare, right? So it's making those pieces work, so we may have to look for a daytime option. And the intent is to have as many people attend as possible. So just while we're here, I'd like to invite members of the public to be able to comment, if there's any members available. Oh, available, of course, interested in addressing council. Please introduce yourself and turn on the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you. Diane Bernard. And my question is just one for clarification. When staff said, you know, double-digit number for tax increase, how does that impact residences and commercial? Is it a blended number, or is there a separate rate for commercial? How is this going to affect the business community as well as the residential community? So just some discussion around that would be very helpful. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard, for both of those items. And usually, we sort of get that as, whoops, as things start to finalize, there's sort of the breakdown. So thank you. Other members of the public, will I wreck my microphone? Please come forward, please.
I guess I just wanted to apologize if-
Sorry, can you introduce yourself again?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm Anna Russell, and I wanted to apologize if the Climate Action Committee process has caused unwittingly some discomfort and concern around the table. And I guess I just want to remind you that as volunteers who are working outside of the district process, your processes are fairly opaque to us, and we haven't participated in a budget, well, I think I can speak for everybody, we haven't participated in this kind of process before. So we don't actually know if we make a recommendation at one meeting, and that, and then we feel like we need to revise it. We don't know that you've already voted on it, or that you would be concerned about that, so I just wanted to beg your forgiveness and let you know about that context. So thank you.
Then that's all fine, Ms. Russell, it's, thank you very much. Other, yes?
Well, I've got to say-
Could you introduce yourself again?
Susan Belford. I've got to say that we're not going to deal with the climate issue if we don't have somebody that's in charge of that file. We need to pay somebody to be the climate action coordinator. That's, to me, it's like, obvious. And I hope that it will become obvious to you guys, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Belford.
William Wallace from SUK. I just wanted to comment in support of hiring a climate coordinator. Your number-one strategic plan is growth, protecting and managing the growth and the environment. So if you don't have someone, a champion, to champion the cause of climate change and climate, manage this climate emergency, how can we, how can we inspire your citizens to participate in what's, the actions that are needed? I see that three positions, your, one is in the planning, another firefighter, and another, I don't know, communications person. We have infrastructures going all around the community with no greenhouse gas accountability whatsoever. We have a sports, pouring cement for 16 hours straight. We don't even know what the greenhouse gas emissions. We have to start thinking about our climate and saving, saving ourselves from humanity's destruction. It's just impossible, and you really need a climate coordinator to direct that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Okay, Mr. McInnis? Oh, one final, okay?
Thank you, Diane Bernard. And I'd like to just sort of add a little bit more to that about the climate situation, and that in these preparations that these committees have gone through, and what they're presenting to you, is really a tremendous amount of work, you know this stuff, and a good pathway to see some good results in the community. One of the other things is that it strategically places the district, this community, in a very good position when we have such a clear, strong plan, and that council is really moving this seriously forward with support and funding. And that is, in my mind, is where it's so better for the feds, our favorite people, and the provincial government to step up and to help us with grants. That when they're going, I think that we're going to start seeing a tremendous change with the following COP, International Conference coming, that we are going to see that the feds and the province will be looking for ways and means to deal with climate. And the only way they really can is to engage the local communities. Everything has been downloaded to municipalities over the years, from, I can remember it happening 30 years ago, the start of downloading responsibilities to local communities, but without the budgets to do it. And really, you know, hamstrung communities, they're still, still that way. So it seems to me the plan is to show that you're ready, that we're ready, to show that this climate action stuff is for real here, we're moving ahead, and that when that decision, that penny drops for the feds and for the province, they're going to be looking to the communities as who's ready to move ahead with these dollars. And it's going to be SUK. Let's just face it, it's going to be SUK. The work that's coming out of these committees is just astounding. So it's good preparation and pre-thinking, and taking that risk, you know, to get there, so that when that, when the penny drops for the feds and the province, we're here, and we're ready to go with it. To me, it's a no-brainer that way. Good strategic thinking, and it meets all the, hits all the buttons, all the way down for the feds and the province. And good luck with that, too. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Yes, please. Well, we have this, we needed to pass a motion first now to extend the time. So motion to extend time. Surprisingly, from Councilor Logan's. Because we're, just after 11:00. So all those in favor, please? That's unanimous, thank you. So now I'll go to the motion that's on the, that's been postponed. So that is that council direct staff to include all organizational and department requests in the draft budget. So that's what's been moved. And any discussion? We've heard from the public, we got a bit more update from staff, you've all read the report, and my understanding is that staff will reach out to find time for a special meeting. Okay? All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. And that brings us to the end. So the end of our Committee of the Whole. So I'll look for a movement, or a motion to adjourn, please, the Committee of the Whole. That's moved by Councilor St. Pierre. And I'll just say, the intent, though, is for us to open up a special council meeting to ratify some of the decisions. So it doesn't mean you can go home yet. Okay? But just stay tuned. So we're adjourning the Committee of the Whole. All those in favor, please? And that's unanimous, thank you. So now, I will call the special council meeting that was scheduled to immediately follow the Committee of the Whole to order, and I'll look for approval of the agenda of the special meeting. Moved by Councilor Bateman, seconded by Councilor Logan's. We're now in special council meetings, so different rules of order apply, you do need a seconder. All those in favor, please? And that's unanimous, thank you. So the first one up is from the SUK Region Community Health Initiative, or Health Network, and that is that council extend for an additional 18 months a memorandum of understanding with the SUK Region Communities Health Network, search in for land at 6671 Waddam's Way, and that council add the following two items under Section 6 of the MOU. One, the provision of the land for a term of 50 years with two additional extensions to 25 years for a cost of $1 per term. Two, that this charitable project will be tax-exempt, consistent with Part 7, Division 7, permissive exemptions of the community charter. Look for a motion to move that by Councilor St. Pierre, seconded by Councilor Bateman. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please? That's unanimous, thank you. The next one is, Councilor Logan's has a conflict, so she's going to step out. Maybe, yeah, by the time we do that, it'll, yeah. So that is that Councilor Logan stepped out, she has a conflict as her member of the family is the executive director, so she always steps out on these items. So that's for anyone watching, everyone in the room already knows that, because they heard it earlier. Anyway, the motion is that council direct staff to add advocating for mental health supports to the strategic priorities chart, and that the Committee of the Whole... Should it just be, and that council? Can I take that out? Okay. And that council direct staff to bring forward a draft two-year term service agreement beginning in 2022, in the amount of $30,000 to be funded from the COVID-19 Safe Restart Fund. Moved by Councilor McMath, seconded by Councilor Bateman. Question? Quick? Okay, so friendly amendment, $30,000 per annum. I think that's friendly, that's what we all know, right? That was in the report? Okay. All right. Thank you for catching that. All those in favor, please? That's unanimous, thank you. And Councilor Logan's is back, okay? Okay, the next one is that council receive the strategic priorities chart update for Q3 2021 for information. Moved by Councilor Logan, seconded by Councilor Beddoes. Questions, comments, corrections? None? All in favor? That's unanimously, unanimous, thank you. Carrie, next? Is that council receive the quarterly update report for information. Moved by Councilor St. Pierre, seconded by Councilor Logan's. Discussion, questions, anything? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. And, okay. Now's when I need my glasses. Okay. Oh, what is going on? Okay. Okay, so. You want to receive a, okay. So here we go. And that council repeat, okay, so for the budget, that council receive this report for information, and that council direct staff to include a service level increase in the 2022 budget for the council department by including the following third-party funding requests. Vancouver Island Film Commission for $2,000, Need2 Suicide Prevention for $3,500, Intermunicipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues for $200, Healthy Schools for $5,000, and SUK Historical Society for $5,400. Period. Okay? So moved by Councilor St. Pierre, and seconded by Councilor Bateman. Discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. And then the next part, we don't need, right? Yes, because then we got into the whole thing about the block. Oh, here we go. Next one is that the CAC revised budget recommendation be built into the first draft of the budget to be presented November 8th. Maybe I would just say to present at an upcoming meeting instead of November 8th, because we've since learned that it might not be November 8th, it could be sooner. Presented at an upcoming meeting. And that the full documentation about the recommendation be forwarded from the Climate Action Committee for inclusion in that council agenda. Okay? And that council direct staff to include a service level increase in the 2022 budget for the Administration Department by including department requests of $35,000 for the Employment Land Strategy, and $30,000 enhanced signage for parks and trails. That's moved by Councilor Bateman, and seconded by Councilor St. Pierre. So for anyone watching this at a later date in time, please note that there's another meeting coming, and we're just going off the Committee of the Whole that just concluded at 11 o'clock, and I'm getting tired, so I just wanted to make that note. Okay, all those in favor, please? And that's unanimous, thank you. Because sometimes people look at one meeting and not the next, and then they're like, what are you guys doing? And trying to link the two together. So the next one is then that council direct staff to include all organizational and departmental requests in the draft budget. So that's moved by Councilor Logan, seconded by Councilor St. Pierre. And again, we have a meeting coming. All those in favor, please? That's unanimous, thank you. And that council adjourn the October 18th, 2021, special council meeting. Moved by Councilor St. Pierre, and seconded by Councilor McMath. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, members of the public, for staying with us tonight, as well as the three that are online. It's great to have you all here. We wish you our very best. All those in favor of adjournment? Unanimous, thank you. Okay.